Time is six o'clock. A quorum of one hundred voters is present. This annual town meeting is called to order. This meeting has been called pursuant to warrant dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-one, duly served and returned. Welcome to the meeting. My name is Michael Wise. I am the Great Barrington's elected moderator for what I hope is the last time we are meeting outdoors rather than in the auditorium as we are emerging from the COVID state of emergency. And we seem to have beaten some of the weather. At least the temperature is much better than we had feared. However, I have my eye on the forecasts just in case we may get rained on later. If so, be prepared to scramble. I have a couple of housekeeping announcements. The audio is available on your car radio, FM frequency ninety point five. Of course, if you can hear this, you don't need that message, but if you see somebody having trouble, it's ninety point five on the radio. Feel free to get comfortable. Set up a lawn chair. Come down here in front where you can see everything up close. Come down under the trees. If you are not fully vaccinated, please wear a face mask when you're outside of your car or at the microphones. Restrooms are available in the school buildings, and there is, I believe, a working porta potty back in that corner of the parking lot. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The select board has called for reading and acknowledgement of our heritage before a town meeting begins, and I will recognize Lee Davis to read the statement now.
As we gather this evening for our annual town meeting, where we will decide upon the future direction of our community, it is important that we also look to and learn from the lessons of the past. We want to acknowledge that we are gathered on the traditional land of the Mohican people and honor with gratitude the land itself and the people who have stewarded it throughout the generations. We commit to continuing to learn how to become care- better caretakers of the land we inhabit, to understand the history and traditions of those who cared for it before us, and to learn from the successes and failures of preceding generations in the pursuit of a more just, equal Great Barrington.
This meeting is being recorded by CTSP and will be available for viewing online later. At this point, I'll introduce the officials who are on the stage. Town Clerk Lieutenant from Assena, Town Accountant Susan Conville, Town Manager, Town Council David Dineski, Town Manager Mark Prohensky, and Town Planner Chris Rembold. On that side, the Select Board Steve Bannon, Lee Davis, Ed Abrams, Eric Gabriel, Garfield Reed. On my right, the Finance Committee Anne O'Dwyer, Michelle Dubair, Thomas Brawvelt, Meredith O'Connor, and Phil Orinstine. I'm expecting a couple of preliminary motions, but before we get to that point, I'll read- I'll explain the procedure for the meeting. The town meeting will be governed by the Constitution and general laws of Massachusetts, the charter and bylaws of the town of Great Barrington. Town meeting time is the reference guide for matters of parliamentary procedure. Only registered voters of Great Barrington may vote. Persons who are not registered voters may address the town meeting with the special permission of the moderator. I have given permission to seven and possibly eight such non-voters to address the meeting. Motions and amendments must be in writing and presented to the moderator. It's best if you present them before or as you are making your motion. It makes it go more smoothly. If you wish to make a motion or to speak on a motion or amendment, go to the area of either of the microphones. There's one on my right, one on my left. Be prepared to speak when your turn comes. I will probably alternate between the two. Please state your name and voting address, and then wait to be recognized by the moderator. When a motion is made and seconded, I will normally recognize the person who made the motion to speak first in support of it. You may speak once on a motion for a time not to exceed three minutes. In this setting, most of you cannot see my color-coded speech timer, so I will be moderately aggressive when you reach your three minutes. At your next period, semicolon, comma, breath, pause, whatever, I will gently suggest that it's time to move on. Thank you and recognize the next speaker. The moderator has discretion to grant permission for an initial presentation longer than three minutes. I have done so for several speakers tonight. Statements should be addressed to the pending motion. Please be considerate and do not repeat points made by previous speakers. Speakers should address the moderator and not each other. Questions should be addressed to the moderator. I will direct the questions to appropriate individuals to respond. Speakers seated on the stage will be recognized and may speak from the stage or the lawn, as the case may be, to make principal motions on the items by the Finance Committee and the Select Board and to respond to questions. Otherwise, speakers up here should participate from the microphones out front. A long colored card has been issued to each voter. Use that card to vote by a show of hands. To tally the vote by a show of hands, there will be a counter assigned to each section of the lot. The counters will report their numbers from the microphones. We will tally them up and then report the total as quickly as we can right after the vote is made, so we don't have to wait for it. To check the sightlines, could everybody please raise your card right now so I can be sure I know where the cards are to be seen? Okay, the cards are pink. And I'm not seeing any on the second row down there. If there's nobody down there, that's fine. Okay, thank you. Again, if you want to bring your chair up here to the front, it's going to make the vote even more reliable. A set of colored ballots with yes and no printed on them has been issued to each voter to be used for a vote by secret ballot. When a vote by secret ballot is called, the moderator will specify which color ballot to use. Votes to borrow money or to increase or exceed the town's debt limit must be taken by secret ballot. An emotion or an amendment to appropriate or raise more than the Finance Committee has recommended, the vote will be by secret ballot if requested by twenty or more voters. To determine that, I will ask for a show of hands. Changing the method of voting is done by making an incidental motion during debate on it. That motion requires a majority vote separately. The moderator has discretion to call for a vote by secret ballot in other circumstances. In the event of a tie vote, a motion fails. I will not exercise a casting vote in that case. A motion to call the question, that is, to end debate and move directly to a vote on the pending matter, must be made from the microphone like any other motion after the speaker is recognized by the moderator. Such a motion is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote. Please be considerate of your fellow citizens' desire to hear and be heard. To call the question just to prevent the meeting from hearing from people on other sides is not technically out of order, but it is obnoxious. A motion for reconsideration of a vote may be permitted only if made within fifteen minutes of the announcement as a result of the vote. Only one motion for reconsideration is allowed for any individual article. When you entered the meeting this evening, you received a copy of the town meeting warrant, which describes the matters to be considered and acted upon at the meeting. In connection with the motions and some warrant articles, the moderator will refer to budget items and will give instructions about the process for debate and vote on specific items. We hope to conclude the warrant, the business on the warrant tonight. If we don't, the meeting will be continued on Thursday night, same time, same place. We would normally take up articles in the order they are printed on the warrant, but I believe there will be a motion to change that order right now. Trevor, this is your chance. Is the microphone out, Alan?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Trevor Forbes, three twenty-five North Plain Road. I'd like to propose a motion that the order of the annual town meeting be rearranged in order to allow citizens' petitions to be heard in the order I'm going to indicate in the moment, but at the start of the meeting. I suggest that we start with twenty-five, then to twenty-six. The twenty-six that's held over from September fifteenth, two thousand twenty, special town meeting, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two. The reason for this, I'm being held up. Thank you.
Seconded this motion? Motion has been made and seconded to take up articles twenty-five, twenty-six, old twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Did you skip thirty?
No.
No, that is that.
Thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two at the beginning of the meeting. This motion is debatable and amendable. You may speak for your motion.
Thank you. Very quickly, most of these citizens' petitions are leftover, old business from the previous annual town meeting and special town meeting in two thousand twenty. And as such, I think it makes sense to have these put before the citizens at the start of this meeting, before we get on to business for this year. The other two warrant articles, I think, should be heard at the same time, so we have all the citizens' petitions made right at the beginning. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this motion? Seeing none, it requires a majority vote. I hope I can get a majority vote. Test the majority by a show of hands. All in favor of moving the citizen petition items up to the beginning of the meeting, signify by raising your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. We will then move to Article twenty-five. Is there a motion on Article twenty-five? Microphone is not on. There may be a switch on the microphone that was turned off.
Yeah, he turned, someone turned it off at the mic.
Yeah. Am I good?
Yes, we can hear you. I've given you some additional time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have voted that the town approve the citizens' petition as detailed in Article twenty-five of the annual town meeting warrant to amend sections seven point one eight point four and seven point one eight point five of the Great Barrington zoning bylaws, seven point one eight marijuana establishments and medical marijuana treatment centers, and modify section three point one point four table of uses accordingly, or take any other action relative thereto.
Relative thereto. I'll treat the motion as having stopped before that point.
Okay.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Michelle, you're recognized to speak to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Article twenty-five is a slight revision of our original article, Article twenty-eight, which was not heard for various reasons at last year's annual town meeting and special town meeting. But as fate would have it, now is the more opportune time to present our article. Concerned citizens of several communities are currently reviewing their town marijuana bylaws, amending bylaws, and some are, for the first time, creating a bylaw. This citizen involvement was not limited to town borders. There were many conversations and sharing of resources between citizens of each town. These towns include but are not limited to Sandisfield, Williamstown, Sheffield, Lee, Lennox, and Agremont. As a matter of fact, as we meet here tonight, Sheffield is also meeting to discuss their marijuana bylaw at their annual town meeting. Yes, we're in good company. But as citizens of Great Barrington, what is our purpose? Our purpose is to better align seven point one eight with the objectives, intent, and spirit of the award-winning and often referenced master plan. As stated in the master plan, residents expect and deserve quiet neighborhoods free from odor, glare, noise, and other impacts of commercial activity. So how do we propose how to do this? Number one, returning the buffer zone to five hundred feet, as stated in the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission regulations. Also, by expanding protections, not just for schools, but for other places where children congregate, such as playgrounds and town-owned beaches. Great Barrington's buffer zone was originally five hundred feet, but later it was reduced to two hundred feet. What was the result? Retail marijuana shops located next door to toy stores, and there are more shops on the way. Number two, citing the zoning bylaws table of uses, no marijuana establishments would be allowed in residential districts and/or areas, areas where our residents and families live, areas that hard-working citizens have invested time and money, investments that are to the benefit of our town and community, and oftentimes have been ongoing for years and years. Shouldn't our resident investors come first? Three, through this amendment, neighborhoods would be protected from nuisances and dangers such as odors, smoke, dust, glare from lighting, noise, and more. Excluding home cultivation, no outdoor cultivation would be allowed within two hundred feet of a property line, and no outdoor home cultivation would be allowed within fifty feet of any property line. The result? Our neighborhoods, our homes, and the character of our neighborhoods will be protected from the adverse impacts that are often associated with this industry. After all, what other industry is required to pay an impact fee for any negative or adverse impact it may bring to a community? But shouldn't our neighborhoods and families be protected as well? According to the Marijuana Business Daily, the economic impact of the marijuana industry for two thousand twenty-one is projected to be seventy-one point four billion dollars to eighty-seven point five billion dollars. So is it really necessary for this industry to locate where our residents and families live, across the street from where someone has invested their life savings into a home? I don't think so. By the way, the word "character" has come under fire recently. Some say its subjective can't be defined. However, our zoning bylaws reference "character" forty-nine times, master plan sixty-seven times, and the word "neighborhood," the zoning bylaws thirty times, and the master plan a whopping a hundred and forty times. So I'm thinking neighborhood "character" means something. Yet, there are people here tonight who live in areas they know will never be faced with a tier eleven cultivation manufacturing facility next door, and it's very possible that the above is falling on deaf ears. But don't all Great Barrington and Housatonic residents deserve to enjoy their neighborhoods and property? Our master plan says yes, and we should as well. Please vote yes on Article twenty-five. And at this time, Mr. Moderator, I would like to be recognized separately to make a motion that this vote on Article twenty-five be by secret ballot? I can't hear you.
Alan, please. Thank you. I would recognize you to make that motion at the end, which might be more appropriate. I will recognize you for it.
Okay.
Just you're letting me know you're going to do it. I'm aware.
Okay, and I have the motion written up.
You have one minute left for your reply.
Yeah, for my rebuttal. Thank you.
This microphone?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
I'm going to get to it. I'm going to get to it.
Bruce LeBarre, Central Division Street. I support this Article twenty-five. It is my opinion it helps protect the citizen and the residential neighborhoods of our town, which currently the bylaw seven point one eight does not. Article twelve, twenty-five establishes written guidelines to follow, and when needed, can be enforced. There is no question on what is and isn't allowed. Thank you.
You?
Hello, my name is Karen Passmore, three seventeen North Plain Road. I'm a homeowner, and I support Article twenty-five.
I'm sorry, I have not recognized you yet. Anyway, Planning Board wants to make a report?
Yes, sir.
I'll recognize Malcolm Fick from the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Malcolm Fick at one Maplewood Avenue, and I'd like to make this report for the Planning Board on this article. If voted, this article would make changes to the location requirements and physical requirements of marijuana establishments. First, while the current zoning bylaw and state law requires marijuana establishments to have a buffer distance from pre-existing K to twelve schools, the proposal would increase the types of establishments that have a buffer distance from pre-existing, oh, which marijuana establishments may be buffered, to also include childcare facilities, preschools, and daycare scanners, and facilities where children may commonly congregate, such as laboratories, parks, and playgrounds, and places of worship. It would also increase the buffer distance from two hundred feet to five hundred feet, while leaving in place the possibility that the Select Board may waive the distance requirements by special permit. Second, the proposal would prohibit any marijuana establishment from a residential district. Currently, only cultivation may be permitted by special permit and only on parcels five acres or greater in R-two and R-four zones. Third, the proposal adds requirements that govern possible nuisance hazard, odor, noise, and light impacts on adjacent properties, and increases outdoor cultivation setbacks from fifty feet to two hundred feet from any property line. Finally, the proposal outdoor prohibits outdoor home cultivation for within fifty feet of any property line, which effectively bans home cultivation from most residential lots in town. The Planning Board believes the proposed five hundred foot buffer requirements would rule out marijuana retailers in the downtown area, where several are already operating. And this is akin to banning new retailers despite the fact the town meeting in two thousand twenty opposed placing limits on the number of these establishments. The Board noted that state law explicitly allows home cultivation for personal use, but this proposal would effectively ban cultivation on lots that are one hundred feet wide or less. The Board has noted that available farmland lies mostly in the R-two and R-four zones, yet this proposal would ban marijuana establishments in these areas. The town does not impose such restriction, restricted requirements on other agricultural uses. For these reasons, the Planning Board opposes the proposal. The Plan, Planning Board does not recommend town meeting approve this article. Thank you.
You? At this microphone?
Briefly, my name is Karen Passmore, three seventeen North Plain Road, Housatonic. I'm a homeowner, and I do support Article twenty-five. Thank you.
This microphone? I'll recognize, who was next at this microphone? Is that, nobody wants to speak at this microphone?
I'd like to.
Anybody else want to speak at this?
I want to. Yes, yes, yes. Can I speak?
Go to the microphone and request to speak.
Hi, I am here, Denise Forbes, three twenty-five North Plain Road.
You're recognized.
Thank you. I fully endorse voting yes for Amendment twenty-five. Let me quote you what the master plan says. Residents expect and deserve quiet neighborhoods free from odor, glare, noise, and other impacts of commercial activity. Proper buffering and design standards can help ensure businesses remain healthy and residential property values remain stable, while encouraging concentration of development in the core areas. Now, we've recently come across a letter dated May thirteenth, two thousand twenty, from Chairman Bannon to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, in which he writes about a project he was working on. This project supports and aligns with our current work, planning work, including our open space and recreation plan update and our municipal vulnerability plan, which in turn are implementing our award-winning community master plan. Okay, town leaders, what will it be? Are we going by the award-winning community master plan or not? Please, residents of Great Barrington, think about what you want for this town. Do you want a place where you can happily walk with your children on Main Street without the undue influence from the marijuana industry? Are you happy with the fact that our Planning Board have made decisions that appear to help some members of the Planning Board, quite specifically, with no regard to us residents? If it was up to them, they would have the whole town of Great Barrington filled with marijuana shops, but not near where Jonathan Henkin lives. Come on. And what about Theory Wellness? That's a great location for marijuana, and it's very successful, and it's thriving. Why do we have to have marijuana shops on Main Street in Great Barrington? I'm not happy walking my children down that road. It's not what we appreciate. Vote yes on Amendment twenty-five. Thank you.
To my left?
Stephanie Vasco, twenty-two Avery Lane.
Stephanie, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm one of those residents who would be negatively impacted by this article because I don't have a hundred feet of property in my commu-, in my, on my property. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for this. And yes, my husband and I grow marijuana plants because my husband raises CBD primary plants, and he uses it to make a wonderful salve that we both use for various ailments, and it works. And it's a heck of a lot more economical than going to Theory or any of the other places in town and paying like seventy dollars for a tiny little tin or something. And we are, I'm retired, he is working on retirement, and we have to pay Great Barrington taxes, so we can't really afford those seventy-dollar little tins. So I find that to say that you want people to be enjoy their, able to enjoy their neighborhoods and property while basically eliminating probably most of the residential units in the central part of town, people who own that property, from your design is outrageous. Plus, the fact that it was added to an amendment that states that you're looking at the regulation of marijuana establishments and medical marijuana treatment centers, it's the very last line into very long amendments, and no mention anywhere previously that you were looking to take away homeowner rights in this amendment and not allow people to use their gardens to grow something that they care to grow. Now, I understand that a lot of people are very offended by the odor of marijuana. I'm not. It's strong. It lasts for about two weeks out of the growing season. It's not two hundred plants. Two adults in a household means twelve plants. And I recently had spent a couple of years living next door to two very heavy smokers who always smoked outside of their house, cigarettes, not marijuana. Cigarette smoke makes me physically ill. Asking them to stay away from our house, which is about, they were about twenty feet away, did not do any good. And I don't think that if I had come to the town of Great Barrington and said, "You must ban smokers on their own property from lighting up a cigarette within fifty feet of any other establishment," would have gotten very far. So, I have no problem with carefully considered regulations of an industry in areas that abut neighborhoods. My property happens to, by a little bit, abut a commercial zone, and I understand the lighting is a problem and noise is a problem. We don't have to do with odor. But I would oppose this amendment strictly on the fact that I think that it, again, is outrageous that with one little article you seek to control the behavior of a lot, large number of residents in this town that really want to enjoy and make use of their own property.
Thank you very much. On this side?
Mr. Moderator?
And I've given you a little extra time on the, on the expectation that you will not repeat points already made.
I'd hope not to, but in the, at the first outset, I just wanted to say that we were prepared to make an amendment, in fact, to this amendment, and what I'd like to do is propose a motion that warrant twenty-five be amended to reduce the buffer zone between residential marijuana cultivation and the property line to twenty-five feet from the fifty feet that we've allowed for in Amendment twenty-five.
Motion in writing?
I do.
May I have it, please? Motion has been made to amend the principal motion. To... Which line, which? Which line, which section is this? To reduce the buffer zone between residential marijuana cultivation and the property line to 25 feet rather than the 50-foot offset that is in the text in the warrant article. Is there a second to this proposed amendment? This motion has been, for amendment, has been made and seconded, and a discussion on the amendment, which deals only with the buffer zone between residential marijuana cultivation and the property line.
Mr. Moderator?
To my right.
I'm Brandy Nelson. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. I'd like to speak about the motion to amend the buffer setback to 25 feet. I would recommend voting against the motion and the warrant article, primarily because when the Planning Board undertakes our zoning amendments, we spend many months studying setback requirements and what the implications of those setback requirements might be to a wide variety of people. To make such a frivolous amendment on the floor without doing any sort of analysis really jeopardizes the ability to understand what the impacts are, so I hope people will vote the motion down.
Other discussion of this proposed amendment, Trevor didn't recognize you to explain it, but perhaps it doesn't need very much explanation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I don't think it really does need much explanation. We have researched this as much as we can, but we don't have the resources of the town government to do a lot of this research. But we felt that this actually did respect the fact that residences should be allowed to obviously be able to cultivate marijuana in line with the state of Massachusetts laws. Thank you.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment? Anybody over here to talk on the proposed amendment?
Can I speak again?
You may speak again on this bit, yes.
I'm sorry, 25 feet doesn't really help us. I'm very happy that so many people in this town have a lot of property around them. I would love to have that, it's wonderful. But I think that this is a pretty good example of how people who have, have no concept of the reality of people who have not. Our yard is small. We, we love it. We have a garden, we have plantings, we have shrubs, and we're fine with the size, but trying to put plants 25 feet away from any neighboring building or resident is not going to help us. So I think I agree with, I'm sorry, I forget your name, the woman who suggested that all of these things needed a bit of additional research and looking into, and you mentioned yourself that you have not done, had any time to research this. So I would propose the amendment, and therefore propose, propose the amendment to the amendment, and therefore propose, sort of, vote against the whole thing. Sorry. Not very articulate tonight.
On this side, Sharon?
Sharon Gregory, 32 Hollenbeck Avenue. Am I recognized now?
Recognized. Speak on this amendment to the main motion.
Yes. I strongly support this amendment and against the idea of, of turning down this amendment and the broader issues. The broader issues on 25 are very strong, and the reduction of the 50 feet to 25 feet, I think, is very reasonable. We don't need to compromise the entire town on the main motion due to a 25-foot difference. Thank you.
Could you please leave my microphone on? Thank you. Bear in mind that this amendment before us right now will only affect the motion at this meeting. It will not, whether it changes the bylaw will depend upon the vote on the main motion. Jonathan?
Jonathan Henkin, 43 West Plain Road. First of all, I've been accused by someone of somehow profiting from the Planning Board. It hasn't happened in 24 years, but maybe it'll happen in the future. As to the, as to the, as to the 25-foot, all of Housatonic is zoned R3. R3, a conforming lot, must have 50 feet of frontage. So most of Housatonic, unless you're having an above conforming lot, you're going to be banned from growing marijuana on your property. Please vote no.
This microphone?
Yes. My name's Michael Monroe. I'm a psychologist, 19 Hemlock Hill Road, Great Barrington. Am I recognized?
Yes, you're recognized. Go ahead.
Thank you. I moved here last fall, so I'm not fully informed on all the matters of Great Barrington and Housatonic. But I wonder if there's a larger question that the tax money from marijuana is wanted versus the other aspects of having marijuana shops populate the village. I believe it might also raise the question that if it is the tax money that's wanted, then perhaps that can modify property taxes, but maybe that money then also would be used for matters such as the parking lot that's proposed this evening. And a parking lot would facilitate the business interests of the village, but it raises a concern that, and I've expressed this to one of the selectmen, that if we have a shop for every purpose in, in Great Barrington, then we become a retail village. And if that's the environment you want, then I would suggest move to Pittsfield. So I'm asking, is there a broader question here besides the, if I may say nuisance issues, but the other side of the coin being the money issues, which might be wanted, but at what price, so to speak? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this particular amendment, the 20, reducing 50 feet to 25 feet? I believe this is in paragraph nine of 718-something in the warrant article.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
If I could just comment on the reduction to 25 feet. Group members did speak with people about that particular aspect.
All those opposed to this amendment to reduce it from 50 to 25 feet? I'm told that I got my tongue wrapped around something. Cancel everything, let me be sure I have this right. The amendment is to reduce the buffer zone between residential marijuana cultivation and the property line to 25 feet from 50 feet. Now, if that is the motion, okay, let's try this again. The vote yes is the vote to reduce the distance to 25 feet. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? I'm afraid I'm gonna have to count the vote. Could the tellers please prepare to take the tellee vote? Do you have your assignments? Excellent. Okay, are the tellers ready?
Mr. Moderator, are we voting all over again, and then they're counting, or?
We are going to have to vote all over again to count them because it was too close for me to tell.
Thank you, sir.
Are the, are the tellers in place? Please wave or something because I don't know where you are. Okay, we're gonna have to repeat the vote. All those in favor of this amendment, please raise your, raise your cards and hold them up until the teller's gone by. In favor of this means you are in favor of reducing the buffer zone from 50 feet to 25 feet. Please keep them up until they're all done counting. I'm not gonna use this. If the tellers could wave or something when you're clearly done. Okay, I believe we've taken the yes vote. All those opposed, please raise your cards and hold them up till the tellers can count. Tellers, when you're finished, could you come to a microphone to report? Go to the microphone, please. Okay, tellers, report?
26 yes, 24 no.
26 yes, 24 no.
23 yes, 20 no.
23 yes, 20 no.
4 yes, 15 no.
9 yes, 21 no.
3 yes, 5 no.
The vote was 65 yes to 85 no. We'll repeat, return to debate on the main motion. At this point, Michelle, if you want to make your motion about the method of voting, we can do that.
I was wondering, Mr. Moderator, when I could do a rebuttal?
You have a minute for rebuttal?
Okay. Thank you very much. A couple things, comments that were made. First off, oftentimes marijuana here is referred to as agricultural. And in Massachusetts, hemp is governed by the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources. Marijuana, however, is governed by the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission and falls under Part 1, Title VII, Chapter 40A, Section 3. And in that law, state law, marijuana is excluded from agriculture. However, it does defer back to the town. I checked the town, and there's no mention in the zoning bylaws where marijuana is agricultural. So I just wanted to point that out. Another situation is being told that our petition's frivolous when over a year we've spent working on it, it's gone under two legal reviews at my personal expense. And we do, again, we do not have a town planner or a town council, and I still see our Planning Board revising their planning, their bylaws. So I take offense to that comment, and I want that in the record. Thank you.
Were you going to make a motion?
On the secret ballot, one moment. I move that the vote on citizen petition, Article 25, be taken by secret ballot.
Is there a second on this incidental motion? Motion's made and seconded. Any debate on this? This is debatable?
May I explain?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Very briefly, due to the controversial and contentious nature of this particular topic, I find for a fairer vote, a secret ballot would be better. I've actually had businesspeople say to me that they support us, but they're hesitant to vote in public in fear that it would hurt their business. So for a fairer, more honest vote, that is why I would like to see a secret ballot. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the, on this motion, whether to, whether to take this vote by, on the main motion by secret ballot? Seeing none, this requires a majority. All those in favor of voting on the main motion by secret ballot, please raise your All those opposed, please raise your cards. By my observation, the motion for a secret ballot fails. So we will vote, I will take a teller vote on this, unless there's, is there more discussion on the main motion?
Yes, over here. Mike?
Over here? Okay.
Ed Abrams, 15 Pleasant Street. This bylaw would zone the cannabis industry out of existence. I applaud the stated aims of the proposed bylaw. Who could be against protecting our neighborhoods? But this proposal doesn't do that. Here are the problems with this zoning change. How close can a marijuana business be to children? The state originally suggested the language proposed here, quote, "Any facility in which children commonly congregate." But they later removed it because it's too vague to define. Children can and do congregate almost anywhere their parents might go. Our current zoning uses the new language recommended by the Cannabis Control Commission. The proposal also requires a 500-foot buffer instead of the current 200-foot buffer. There is literally no, there is literally no property, there's literally no property zoned for retail and also 500 feet from a place where children commonly congregate, not even Theory Wellness. This bylaw would zone retail marijuana out of existence. Two, quoting, "No marijuana establishment will be allowed in any residential district." Right now, the only marijuana establishment that is allowed in a residential district is cultivation. Every farm in Great Barrington is in a residential district. If this passes, this crop will not be available to farmers, no matter how much land they have, how from, how far they are from their neighbors, and how small a cannabis crop they want to grow. Currently, you need a special permit if you want to grow marijuana. You have to demonstrate that the negative impacts of your, on your neighbors will be minimal. That allows for case-by-case evaluation rather than a blanket prohibition. This bylaw would outlaw all cultivation in Great Barrington. Some of the other language here would again outlaw any marijuana business, and if it were applied to other businesses, it would make all business illegal. Quote, "No use shall be allowed, which creates the nuisance to abutters." Who's defining nuisance? I live next to the library. They have outdoor children's programming that I can hear in my house with the windows closed. I happen to love the sound of children singing, but I could see how someone else might call it a nuisance three days a week. Quote, "No odor can be detected at the exterior of a marijuana establishment. No noise can be detected at any adjoining use or property." No odor at all, ever? No noise at all? Again, that's just not a reasonable expectation. We demand reasonable behavior from our neighbors. These requirements aren't reasonable. We would never have, and we would never and have never, put that kind of restriction on any other business. As for the outdoor cultivation for personal use, that's been dealt with. Far too many people would be kept from it, and it would be left to people who could afford large property. I urge the sponsors of this bylaw to work with the Planning Board and craft a bylaw that will actually achieve their very worthy goals. Please vote no. Thank you.
Question, question over here, to your left.
Yes?
Is Mr. Abrams speaking as a select board member or a citizen?
I believe he's speaking as a citizen. I have asked the people who are sitting up here to go to the microphones out front unless you're actually making a motion for the select board's business, but in the interest of time, I didn't want to go through that drill. He was, is there any more to be said about the main motion? From somebody who has not spoken yet on the main motion. Jonathan?
Jonathan Henkin, 43 West Plain Road, still. I second Ed's emotion, but also I wanted to point out that this no-noise condition effectively eliminates air conditioning from any possible marijuana establishment. We don't do that for homes, we don't do that for businesses, but this would effectively ban air conditioning. It's 88, it's 88 degrees here. Enjoy.
Any points haven't been made yet? To my left?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Annie Alquist. I live at 219 South Street in Housatonic, and I just wanted to speak in opposition of the motion. When some of the marijuana shops first opened up on, right, right next door to the toy store, I was outraged. I'm a mom, I'm not opposed to recreational marijuana use at all, but I do have young kids, and I was like, I don't want to, I just, just, eh, no. And some of my friends were like, yeah, but there's liquor stores right on the street, and, you know, I- And, you know, I have to say, over the last few months, I've really come to appreciate the way that Calix operates their business. They have, you know, you can't see anything from the road, it's very modest, I find it very respectful. And as someone who does bring my kids to the toy store and whatnot, I just, I think they've done a good job. And I think that also as someone who has young kids, like, I want to see more young, hip, diverse people in Great Barrington. And this bylaw, I mean, I think having marijuana shops in town will draw more people who, you know, have a broader view of things. And I like that, and I want that, and I agree with everything also that Mr. Abrams said. So, I'm a convert, so I'm opposed to the motion. Thank you.
To my right?
Hi, my name is Maureen Quigley. I just want to say, the children are our future, and we're the rights to the children. Are we, are the children allowed to vote? Do the children have a say in this? Thank you.
Um, hello?
To my left, yes. Have you spoken already on this motion? I believe you have. Yes, you have. You were the second speaker.
Okay, but other people have spoken two times, so I have something different to say.
I'm sorry. Once the motion, you spoke on the main motion already.
I just spoke saying that I supported it, but I didn't give any details.
That was your chance.
Did you want any detail, or are you saying you don't want to hear what I have to say?
I'm saying, could you be real quick, because the rule is you have to speak once.
Okay, I'll be really quick. You know, my child's father was a pothead, and my child grew up as a fatherless child. And I do think that marijuana is very bad for families. I also have to say, when I, I have to question the wisdom and the values of this town. How on earth did Calix end up between two toy stores? And that just, to me, is the bottom line of this. When I see Calix, I see the proprietors always standing out on the sidewalk with their music on, and it reminds me of when Ben's father would buy marijuana on the street. I thought, times have changed. This is not a good direction for this town, but I just want to say, the heart of it, why is a marijuana dispensary between Matruska and Tom's Toys? It's, that is very bad judgment, and you are responsible for that very bad judgment. Thank you.
To my right, we have been at this for forty-five minutes, so please try to make points that haven't been made before.
Carfield Reed, One-O-Seven Castle Hill Avenue, speaking as a citizen. I am all for our petition Twenty-Five, and I wanted to let you know, we are not against marijuana. We are not against people making a living, making money. What we'd like to see is marijuana establishments being placed where they don't interfere with people's lives and kids. It's very important. I spoke with the Marijuana Commission myself and thought that was absurd, that they believed that language was too ambiguous, because we know where kids congregate. There's no ambiguity to that. So I disagree with that. I also feel that it was very bad judgment to put that marijuana shop on Main Street. And I hope that when these stores do empty, and I feel like maybe we're just going for a quick buck perhaps, because these stores are going to be empty as soon as Connecticut and New York get their act together, which will be soon, and we'll have empty stores again, and I hope that we have enough sense and vision not to make the mistake again. I vote yes on Twenty-Five.
Thank you. Dan?
Daniel Bailey, Two-O-Seven North Street, Husatonic, Mass. Question, Mr. Moderator, as far as point of order. Is it out of order for three planning board members to be discussing this, without it being?
That's not a matter for the order for this meeting to be concerned about.
Okay, so maybe the town, okay.
That was your, your intervention was a point of order?
No, that was a question for you. Now?
Do you have anything to say in the motion?
Yes, I do.
Then say it, please.
Yes. So just a couple corrections to Mr. Abrams' point about the disbanding cultivation. The fact of the matter is, still, you'd still be allowed to grow six plants in your house or twelve per household. That still allows you to grow your own personal usage. Secondly, Mr. Hankin described the road frontage as fifty feet. That does not mean that your lot is only going to be fifty feet wide. So his measurements are way off there. And thirdly, I think it's really important that we really look at the fact that this isn't going to take away anything that is already established. We have to look beyond the money here, okay? The marijuana facilities that already are in place will still remain in place. This is talking about future planning, which our planning board does not seem to want to actually do, is actually planned for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Correct, you have not spoken on the main motion yet.
I have not spoken yet.
You're, that's right, you have not.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen?
Endify yourself, again.
Sorry, Trevor Forbes, Three-Twenty-Five North Plain Road. Do you recognize?
You don't recognize. Again, please don't duplicate.
I'll try not to. I just want you to consider our reasons for bringing this citizen's petition to you tonight. A lot of people, and we've heard some people here today, give the impression that this is an extreme motion. To put the record straight, it clearly is not extreme. What we've suggested as a buffer zone of 500 feet to protect children is exactly in line with the recommendations and spirit of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission, nothing more, nothing less. We also support the award-winning Great Barrington Master Plan, which has been authored by some very good people who are standing on the platform today. We believe it's very wise, and we would like to believe that all our, our planning board and all the other boards in Great Barrington believe it too. The Master Plan for Great Barrington makes great play of diversity, diversity in population as well as diversity in the services provided. Increasing diversity should encourage tourism into Great Barrington. This diversity must include the services offered in downtown Great Barrington. In this respect, there should be concern over any activity that is likely to restrict diversity. Now, Mott Children's Hospital in Ann Arbor, Michigan, carried out a national poll on children's health in November 2019. Its research revealed that when it comes to where marijuana dispensaries are located, many parents feel that any area near children is too close for comfort. The Town of Great Barrington's Planning Board and Select Board have allowed a dispensary to be located, as we've heard tonight, right between two toy stores. So I can only conclude, our elected officials appear to know something that Mott Children's Hospital doesn't. Maybe they've done their own research. I'd like to see that research and that survey. The principal premise of most shops in any other establishments located along a Main Street is that consumers can be enticed into the shop to purchase. That is the same for realtors as it is for hair salons and clothing stores. Marijuana dispensaries, however, have to present windows blocking views into the interior of the store, thus presenting a visual challenge to visitors to downtown Great Barrington. Indeed, given the limited ability to advertise their presence, marijuana dispensaries present a very different type of retail establishment. The Master Plan calls for Great Barrington to welcome families and encourage family activities, such as music, hiking trails, et cetera. But positioning retail marijuana in the wrong location, close to where families with young children congregate, threatens to irreparably alter Great Barrington's distinctive character, which is, incidentally, also lauded in the Master Plan. I want you to consider this, that this amendment not only supports marijuana establishments as defined by Great Barrington bylaws, but it aims to ensure these businesses are located in positions unlikely to cause offense to those parents of children who are wary of cannabis. This can only help the town going forward. So ask yourselves, why have our elected officials chosen something much more lenient for the marijuana industry than those recommended by the state's own Cannabis Control Commission? There's been a lot of discussion, as there was last year, about NIMBYism, not in my backyard. However, over the last year, we've seen a number of our elected officials on the Planning Board and even the Select Board vote in favor of marijuana and industrial expansion in locations other than theirs. One member of the Planning Board, as you've heard tonight, actually wrote a letter to the Town of Egremont against a marijuana establishment close to where he lives. His argument? The adverse impact this business would have on his quiet neighborhood. The hypocrisy is so blatant. These are the people telling you it is okay to have marijuana establishments within 200 feet of location where children congregate, as long as it's not close to their homes. So, will Amendment Twenty-Five matter to the supply and success of the marijuana industry in Great Barrington? No, it won't, as the very evident success of Theory Wellness shows. It's not on Main Street, and I'm sorry, Ed Abrams, I've done the, uh...
Please, personal attacks are not permitted.
Okay, then I retract that. But Theory Wellness is not 500 feet away from a children's location. It is actually somewhere in the region of seven to 800 feet away. I've done the math. I believe the same applies to the pass in Sheffield. Both of these, incidentally, are the most successful retail marijuana establishments in this environment, in this, in this district, and in very appropriate locations. So I urge you to join us in voting yes for Amendment Twenty-Five tonight. Let's just restore some sanity into the way the Town of Great Barrington is governed. Thank you.
To my left?
Pedro Pachano, Five Abbey Hill Drive. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to call a question.
Question has been called. Is there a second? Second? This is not debatable. All those in favor of calling the question, please raise your cards. This requires a two-thirds vote, by the way. This is a motion to end debate and vote on the main motion. Honking does not count as a vote, okay? Put them down. All those who would like to continue with the debate, please raise your cards. That's a consensus, if I ever saw a consensus. Let's take this vote by teller vote. So the vote is now on the main motion, which is to amend Section 7.1, 8.4, and 7.1, 8.5 of the zoning bylaw and modify Section 3.1.4 of the Table of Uses as set out in warrant article number Twenty-Five.
Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry. On the call of the question, did that pass?
It certainly did.
Okay, we just couldn't hear over here.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Because of the horn.
The motion to call the question passed by a two-thirds margin. Okay? I'm now calling for the vote.
Clarification, is, are we voting on the main amendment or the, I mean, the amendment or the main motion?
As I just said, we are now voting on the main motion. And I just read the motion again, I'll read it a third time. We are voting on the motion to amend Section 7.1, 8.4, and 7.1, 8.5 of the zoning bylaw and modify Section 3.1.4 of the Table of Uses as set out in warrant article number Twenty-Five. Tellers, please take your positions. All those in favor of this, please raise your cards. This also, by the way, takes a two-thirds vote. Please hold your cards up until the teller has gone by.
Mr. Moderator, we couldn't hear. Could you, could you repeat that?
We are voting yes or no. At the moment, those who are in favor of your motion are to raise their cards. I was pointing out that the motion requires a two-thirds vote to carry. Tellers, okay with those votes? Please, put your cards down. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your cards, and hold them up till the teller has gone by. Tellers, when you are done, please go to a microphone. Tellers, please report.
Seven yes, thirteen no.
Seven yes, thirteen no.
Eight yes, twelve no.
Eight yes, twelve no.
Ten yes, twenty no.
Ten yes, twenty no.
Twenty-three yes, twenty no.
Twenty-three yes, twenty no.
Eighteen yes, and twenty-five no.
Eighteen yes, twenty-five no. I know it didn't carry. Forty, sixty-five, ninety, fifteen, twenty-five, thirty-five, forty, fifty-five, eight, seventy-three. Four to sixty-six, yes, ninety, no, that falls short of a majority, and well short of two-thirds, the motion fails. Moving on to Article Twenty-Six on Special Permit Standards. Is there a motion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to take no action on Article Twenty-Six. Has been a motion to take no action on Article Twenty-Six. Motion is made and seconded to take no action on Article Twenty-Six. All in favor, raise your cards. Any opposed? Motion carries, we will take no action on Article Twenty-Six on Special Permit Standards. There is another Article Twenty-Six, which is the one that is left over from last year's special meeting. Is there a motion on the Article Twenty-Six concerning the mixed use of zoning?
Yes, sure, yes, sure, Mr. Moderator. I'm Michael Kern in Twelve Mahaly Street, and I authored this and like to speak on it.
Could you state your motion?
Yes, the motion is to convert the... To ask town residents to vote to amend zoning law, Section 9.11, as set forth below, and to amend the zoning map accordingly.
As set forth on the warrant article?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Motion is to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 9.11, and the zoning map as set out in Article Twenty-Six from last year's numbering. Is there a second? I do not hear a second to this motion. Motion fails for lack of a second. Article Twenty-Seven. Is there a motion on Article Twenty-Seven concerning the table of uses in bylaw, Section 3.0, C-13? Seeing no one coming to the microphone, I'll accept a motion to take no action on this article. Motion is made to take no action on this article, second, made and seconded. All in favor of taking no action on this article? All opposed? Motion carries, we will take no action on Article Twenty-Seven. Article Twenty-Eight is independently in the book.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
The content of Article Twenty-Eight was addressed under Article Twenty-Five. Also, Article Twenty-Eight had not gone before the Planning Board at their public hearing in March 2021. So therefore, it will be passed over with your permission.
Okay, not by permission. There's a motion, a motion to take no action on this article. Do I hear a second? Made and seconded, all in favor of not taking action on this article? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries, we will take no action on Article Twenty-Eight. Article Twenty-Nine on Meeting Procedures.
Mr. Moderator, excuse me a second if I may. Article Twenty-Six was properly submitted as a warrant article a year ago with the proper number of signatures.
This is a point of order about the order of the meeting. I'll tell you what happened. You made a motion, and nobody seconded your motion. The warrant article is not itself a motion. The article was properly in the warrant, but when you brought it up, no one seconded your motion. And thus, by the usual rules of parliamentary procedure, the motion fails. And thus, by the usual rules of parliamentary procedure, the motion fails.
I thank you for the clarification. I'm terribly upset, but I thank you for the clarification.
Sorry. You're up again, I believe, because I'm asking for a motion on Article 29.
Ask the residents of the town to approve to amend Chapter 241 of the Town Code, Division 3 miscellaneous rules regarding citizen speak.
And in particular, you want it in the form laid out in the warrant article, correct?
Correct.
Give me a little help there. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
That motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Kernan, would you like to explain your motion?
Give me a moment, Mr. Moderator, my papers for that motion over there. I thought they'd be here for half hour in the previous one. Thank you. I remain Michael Kernan, and I still reside at 12 Mahaly Street. This Article 29 proposal will reinstate lost democracy rights for the citizens of this town. It will restore freedom of speech for an item on the agenda of a planning board or other committee meeting at a time when the right to speak has some relevance. Town residents shall have the right to address a board or committee on any item that requires a vote at a time before the board votes on that item. This is especially true concerning the planning board. Often, a proponent of an item on the agenda, usually a developer, has met with the town manager and/or planner, other government official, or possibly sometimes a board member in the preparation for the presentation of its proposal. Possibly many hours have been spent by town officials in this pursuit. According to the Commonwealth's Open Meeting Law, the agenda must be published 48 hours in advance, not counting weekends. In this town, the packet is almost always last minute. So is the agenda. This places an undue burden on the residents who are given very little time to be made of a developmental proposal and even less time to investigate and judge its merits. At the meeting, the board allows the proponent, its attorney, engineer, or other advisors to present evidence and prepared documents and to speak at length on the matter. Occasionally, there may be questions by members of the board. Then there is a vote. The planning board does not encourage residents the right to speak at that time before a vote on the item. The chair has stated that residents may speak in a timely manner only at a public hearing. Residents may speak as of right during a citizen's speak portion at the end of the meeting, but this may be of little consequence to the merits of a proposal as a vote has already been taken. There may be citizens with knowledge or an interest in the proposal who may provide the board with viewpoints and information that are truly beneficial to consideration of the proposal. Allow me to give an example. On April 24, 2019, a vote was taken on a site plan. Two residents submitted 10 pages of detailed inquiry into the proposal, but we watched as the board did not read such documents. As the board took pro forma votes on the statutory requirements for approval of a site plan, often nodding or saying nothing as the town planner hastily read each requirement, this citizen objected to the failure of the board to consider any of the relevant issues aside from what the developer and its paid consultants presented over many hours. The board chose to see only one side of the issue and disregarded important and relevant matters such as maple tree destruction, inadequate parking, effect on traffic on a small narrow street, emergency vehicles, inadequate setbacks, water overflow, and neighborhood character. As other residents felt encouraged to also stand up and recount it, the chair threatened to evict this resident from the meeting. Comments by its citizens are an important and relevant facet to consideration of matters by any board at any meeting. This Article 29 will give residents the right to speak on a particular item at a time when the discussion of an item is still a viable matter. That is, the right to speak and often comment on matters that affect them before the board has voted. In this way, the board will have the benefit of hearing more than one side of an issue, not just the proponent and its hierarchies, but also those affected by such proposal. The board must listen to more than just the proponent of the proposal. In fairness, such residents will be allowed as much time as the proponent of an item is permitted to have. I have exempted procedural and housekeeping matters from this proposal. I ask you to restore some democracy to this town, and I urge a yes vote on this decision number 29. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on this motion under Article 29? To my right.
Mr. Moderator, I'm Brandy Nelson, 28 Barrington Place, Chair of the Planning Board. There are a few individuals in the community who, despite many meetings of explanation regarding the site plan approval process, are unhappy with the process. The board follows all of the state requirements, and what we try to explain to individuals at the outset of an application that has emotional value to abutters or other stakeholders is that a site plan approval cannot be denied. We can condition things, but we cannot deny. And so, it's not a popularity contest. It's a matter of following the process that's outlined in our zoning code and reviewing the criteria in site plan review. And so, I regret that people are unhappy with that, but it is the process and the board is following it. Thank you.
Further discussion on this motion? To my right.
Thank you, James Bailey, 9 Lynn Lane, Housatonic. I just find it absolutely absurd in this day and age when everybody mentions the word "democracy." In our own community, we're not allowed to speak as citizens before these boards. I think every citizen should be heard prior to any decisions, whether it's rational, irrational. I think the fact that we need to be heard should be considered. I mean, I'll be damned, I spent six years all over the world fighting for democracy. I'm going to sit here and I'll fight for my town and my citizens in this community to speak before five, six, seven people who believe they have the right to quiet us. Thank you.
Seeing no one at the microphones, if you want to speak, please go to the microphone.
Sure. Denise Forbes, 325 North Plain Road. I just want to say I am in total agreement with what Jim Bailey just said. And us as citizens, we live here, we work here, we pay taxes here, and a lot of them. We really need to be able to chime in on decisions before people make final decisions. People need to hear what we say. And if you're going to stifle us and muffle us, we're just going to rise up and do things in a different way to get rid of the board members and put our own people in. So, thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, seeing no one else at the microphones, I call for a vote on the motion to amend Town Code, Chapter 241, as set out in the warrant article. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Tellers, could you please take your positions? I really can't count very well. Tellers, this will be a teller vote. Are we ready? Okay, let's repeat the vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend the Town Code as set out in the language for Article 29, please raise your cards and hold them up. Thank you very much. Put your cards down. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your cards and keep them up.
Let's oppress the people some more, huh? Continue to oppress. Get off a board. Get off a board. Yeah, there you go. How about you get off the board? All right. There you go. Don't run again. Do not run again. Simple. Yeah, take Hank and with you, too, that lying sack of shit.
Shut up. Oh, what the heck? What are you going to do?
We're going to have the fastest budget discussion.
Oh, my God.
Let's get nice, let's get nice.
What is this? Yep, yep. I can insult who I want.
Tellers, come to the microphones when you are done.
It's calm down, Michael. It's calm down. There is a...
Naughty, naughty. Tellers, please report.
12 yes, 5 no.
12 yes, 5 no.
12 yes, 8 no.
12 yes, 8 no.
16 yes, 14 no.
16 yes, 14 no.
21 yes, 21 no.
21 yes, 21 no.
24 yes, 9 no.
24 yes, 9 no. The motion carries. We'll have the total for you in just a minute. 13, 27, 47, 48, 50, 7, 30, 60, 70, 80, 5. By 85 to 57 at 7:25. Article 29, is there a motion?
That was 29, Your Honor.
30, 30, 30. Article 30.
Yes, I move that the assemblage vote to approve Article 30 in the warrant, which basically amends Chapter 189 of Town Code, Division 2 Selectmen's Regulations. In short, it does the same thing as Article 29.
Your explanation comes in a minute. Your motion is to amend Chapter 189 as set out in the warrant article.
Yes, section.
Thank you.
189 dash 1.
Thank you.
And I second that.
Is it second?
I second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Kernan, I told you you could have three minutes, a total of six for the two. You have two minutes left.
Okay, I don't expect to use that because based on the vote, I think most of the people listened carefully what I said the first time. That was for the planning board and all other committees. This Article 30 is for the select board. And the same reasoning goes on in that we have developers show up, proponents show up, their lawyers, their advocates, their everything. The paperwork is in the hands of the town officials prior thereto, and then 48 hours in advance, they post a notice, and then usually sometime after that 48 hours, a packet gets sent in. Sort of like what happened with the Maple Avenue project, like nine pages got thrown in late, et cetera, et cetera. Again, I have an example there back on January 13, 2020, the meeting, and there was a proposal for Form A to put a driveway in on the Mahaly Street where the big tree is and the site plan approval, to put the driveway in right at the base of the tree. And we were not allowed to speak. We didn't offer a time. The board voted 5-0, and then one concerned citizen got up and spoke about the tree, 200-year-old tree, and we're tearing it down. Okay? After that person spoke, one select board member had the grace to stand up and said, "I appreciate your comments, and I might have voted differently had I known that. My proposal seeks to avoid that issue where we do have citizens with an interest and some with specific knowledge. They get the right to speak before a decision is made on any topic. I have excluded procedural and housekeeping matters, and I thank you all very much," and vote yes on number 30.
Before we have any further discussion on this, I will point out something. This motion is to amend a part of the Town Code that includes regulations issued by bodies that are not subject, that are not the town meeting. So, the effect of this will be advisory.
Pedro Pachano, 5 Abbey Hill. I'd like to add an amendment or propose an amendment to the motion that adds language that states that a person...
Amendment must be in writing.
I've got it written. It states that a person would be allowed to speak before a vote when recognized by the chair for a minimum of two minutes.
Bearing in mind that this whole motion is advisory, let me see your amendment. The amendment is not ready for prime time. Is there any further discussion on this motion under Article 29, under Article 30? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your cards.
Denise Forbes, 325 North Plain Road. I support this amendment, and I would...
I didn't recognize you, and we're running short on time, and you're going to win anyway.
Denise Forbes, 325 North Plain Road. Do you recognize me?
We are in the middle of voting.
Oh.
Yes. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Motion carries at 7:30. Article 31, toxic waste storage, is there a motion?
Mary Elizabeth Merritt, 110 Christian Hill Road. I am the sponsor for this Article 31 to...
And your motion is?
To approve a resolution to prohibit hazardous and toxic waste storage disposal or dumping in Great Barrington mass, which includes Housatonic.
As set out in the warrant article. Yes, okay. Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt a resolution set out in Article 31. Mary Beth?
The reason for this was actually, this was deferred from a year ago when the GE negotiations with EPA were going on, and we do have property in Housatonic that actually was bought by the real, I mean, by GE to be a potential toxic waste dump site. And even though supposedly it's been resolved by putting it in Lee, Lee is contesting that, and so, we are still probably fair game. And besides that, at the beginning of the meeting, we said we wanted to honor the tradition of the native peoples who protected this land, and we can continue to be the landkeepers, so I don't think toxic waste dump belongs here. So, I would approve it, I mean, appreciate it if you would vote for this motion, resolution.
Any further discussion on this motion? Denise?
Denise Forbes, 325 North Plain Road. This is something very dear to my heart because we don't need toxic waste dump sites in Housatonic or Great Barrington. Everyone needs to vote yes for this because otherwise, we're going to be dealing with what Lee's dealing with. We don't even know what's going to happen at Rising Pond yet, and GE just bought the land over in Lee, so this is a big fight that we're all in together. So, we all need to be very positive and vote yes on this one. Otherwise, we could have toxic waste in our water. It's bad enough Housatonic water is what it is. We all are suffering with dealing with that. We don't want toxic waste dump sites in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Microphone?
Yeah, this is just a question.
Yeah, this is just a question. I'm not sure we're ready to answer. Is toxic waste, um, a legal term? In other words, my concern is motor oil could be considered toxic waste, and something like this might then bar its disposal or storage. Just a question. Does anyone up there know?
Is anybody knowledgeable about whether there is a legal meaning to the term toxic waste here?
I did look that up before I wrote it, and it did seem to qualify quite a lot of possible contaminant stuff.
We have a lawyer here who's about to try to answer the question.
Oh, good. Sorry, sorry.
Mr. Moderator, there is state and federal law regulating toxic substances and materials with various definitions. Generally, oil... There is state and federal law that regulates toxic substances and materials utilizing various definitions. Generally, oil is considered to be a hazardous material. That is the case under Chapter twenty-one E of the General Laws of Massachusetts. I couldn't give you every statutory definition of what is toxic, but I would repeat what is noted. This is a resolution. It's not going to be binding. It expresses a sense of the meeting. So in my view, the terminology does not need to be precise in the form that a bylaw or other statute would need to be.
Jorge Alcala, one-thirty-nine Alfred Road. I appreciate very much the spirit and the motivation of this article. I question the language under any circumstances. This makes this very much a NIMBY article. I don't think there is anyone voting here who does not have hazardous or toxic substances in their home, and we are saying, "Okay, but when we're done, somebody else has to take it." If we wanted to eliminate hazardous and toxic waste, we should eliminate our usage of hazardous and toxic substances. So I say, with this language, under any circumstances, I would suggest voting no. Certainly, we don't want toxic dumps next to schoolyards, but this is, you know, a complete nuclear option. No hazardous or toxic waste under any circumstances. Everything in your homes has to go somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Bearing in mind, this is a resolution, not a regulation. To my left?
Yeah, Jonathan Hank at the forty-three West Plain Road. A question. Is this... This does not go in our bylaws. This does not go in the town code. What is the impact of this if it passes?
This is a resolution stating the sense of the meeting. It is not a regulation in the town code. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the resolution, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries at seven-thirty-seven. Article thirty-two, citizen petition for a resolution concerning private prisons. Is there a motion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to take no action. Second? Moved and seconded to take no action on Article thirty-two. All in favor, raise your cards. Any opposed? Thank you. And now we can go back to Article one. I predict tonight's review of the budget may set records. And I thank you, people who set out, who made your citizens petitions a year ago. We did get to them, and we, I hope, gave them the time you had hoped for. The financial articles are coming up now. I will ask the town manager to make a little presentation about the budget before we get into them.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. I'm Mark Bruhinsky, your town manager. I'm going to be, uh, running you through very quickly a presentation on our fiscal year twenty-two budget, and you should have received a handout this evening titled Fiscal Year Twenty-two Financial Overview. So beginning on page two, our priorities. Our priorities for this coming year were public safety and public health, of course, being year two of COVID-19, investing in infrastructure, and investing in stabilization or savings for our future. Page three, expected revenues. The tax levy remains our most significant source of revenue, supplemented by state aid, local receipts, and free cash. Page four, expenditures. Expenditures at a glance. We'll get into greater detail on our proposed budget in just a few minutes. I won't spend much time on this slide. Page five is simply historical budget figures from fiscal eighteen through fiscal twenty-two. And page six is a breakdown of our operating budget in, and I should say again, more detailed, department-by-department budgets are included in your warrant for this evening. Page seven summarizes our proposed capital program for this year at three million one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-one-hundred dollars with some historical figures from fiscal eighteen to twenty-two. Page eight provides some more detailed information on our proposed capital budget this year, and again, we'll cover these in much more detail very soon. Page nine, our proposed special articles. Again, just a very brief overview. All of these will be explained by staff as we move on through the warrant this evening. And lastly, page ten, just wanted to recognize our department heads, our select board, our finance committee, for all their work developing and reviewing the fiscal twenty-two spending plan. This process starts for us in as early as November and carries right through annual town meeting, and I just wanted to thank everyone for their time and their participation this year. Thank you.
So we'll now proceed to Article one on revolving funds for the council on aging. Is there a motion?
Voted that the town amend Chapter thirty-six of the Great Barrington Code revolving funds by adding a new fund to Section thirty-six dash one for the council on aging, as shown in the warrant for this town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Explanation or discussion? Anybody in the staff want to explain what this is about? Microphone?
Good evening. Can they hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Sue Carmel, Finance Director.
Closer.
Thank you. Um, so the purpose of this article is to establish a revolving fund in order to fund the operations of the elderly transportation program. Um, it's our goal to be able to fund this program fully as a revolving fund. Um, in the initial year or two of operations, partial funds will be needed to offset the program and funded in the council on aging budget, which we will address in Article five.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously at seven-forty-one. Article two, revolving funds. Is there a motion? Microphone on the right side. Microphone. Over here. Microphone's over.
I can't.
Right. It's not on.
Voted that the town set the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two spending limits for the town revolving funds as set forth in the warrant, namely plumbing inspections fifteen-thousand, wiring inspections fifty-five thousand, gas inspections twelve thousand, cemetery five thousand, and council on aging transportation fifty thousand.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. This is one of our routine motions. Want to explain it briefly?
Um, sure. This is an article that we bring forward every, um, every town meeting. It's routine. It's required to annually vote to set the spending limits for the revolving funds. And there are no changes other than the addition of the council on aging transportation program that we spoke of in Article one.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously at seven-forty-three. Article three, elected official salaries. Is there a motion?
Voted that the town fix the salaries of all elected officials for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-one, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, as indicated below. Elected official salaries, select board, twenty-three thousand five hundred, which is four thousand seven hundred per select board member.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Explanation?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. We discussed this last year, and this is year two, and the final year of a salary increase for our select board members, and it's being proposed tonight to fully cover the healthcare, health insurance premiums, I'm sorry, or at least that twenty percent portion that each select board member is responsible for. So if a select board member opts not to take advantage of the health insurance that we offer, they would simply receive a forty-seven-hundred-dollar salary.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed? Amazing. That one's unanimous, too. At seven-forty-five. Article four, set out Chapter ninety funds. Is there a motion?
I'm just gonna stay here for one more. Okay. Voted that the town accept any and all funds being provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Division of Transportation, Mass DOT, under the provisions of Chapter ninety of the Massachusetts General Laws to pay for such costs as allowed by appropriate legislation in connection with the maintenance, repair, and construction of townways and bridges.
Is there a second? Made and seconded. Any need for explanation? This is to accept state money for highways. Seeing no need for discussion, all in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? That passes unanimously at seven-forty-six. Article five, town operating budget. Motion, please.
As I go through each line item, should people call out, hold?
Read... Uh, I'm gonna go through it again. Read the motion.
All right, I'll read the full motion. Voted that the town raise and appropriate such sums of money necessary for the operation of departments in the town for the ensuing fiscal year for the purposes outlined below. General government, town manager, select board, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty. Finance committee reserve fund, one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-three-hundred. Finance director, town accountant, one-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-five. Technology, two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand. Assessor's office, one-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-five. Treasurer-collector, two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-seven. Town clerk and elections, one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-one. Conservation commission, thirty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-seven. Various boards and commissions, twenty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy. Planning board, five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty. Zoning board of appeals, one-thousand-three-hundred. Office of planning and community development, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ten. Public safety, police department, one-million-eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-and-ten dollars. Fire department, six-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-and-twenty. Communications and emergency management, twenty-one-thousand-five. Building inspector, one-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twelve. Animal control, twelve-thousand-two-hundred. Department of Public Works, two-million-four-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight. Public health, health department, one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-three. Community services, council on aging, one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-nine. Veterans affairs, one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-seven-hundred. Human services, thirty thousand. Cultural and recreation, libraries, five-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-five. Parks and recreation, one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand. Miscellaneous, insurance, one-million-eight-hundred-and-four-hundred... Excuse me, one-million-eight-hundred-and-four-thousand-seven-hundred. Debt service, two-million-sixty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-two. Retirement, nine-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-nine. Celebrations and seasonal... Excuse me, celebrations, seasonal activities, events, and band programs, twelve-thousand-five-hundred. For a total general fund budget of twelve-million-nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. I am going to review these items one at a time. This is the drill we always go through, but it's farther to the microphone. If you think you're likely to have a question or want to make a change in one of the items, go to the micro... I'm gonna... I'm asking you to call out, hold, when I reach that item. And for me to hear you, you'll have to be close to a microphone. So look down the list. I'm giving you some warning right now. If you think something down there is something you want to call, hold on. Please start moving toward a microphone, 'cause I'm going to start at the top of the list in about five, four, three, two, one seconds. Questions or inquiries concerning town manager and select board?
Hold.
Hold.
Could I just make a request as a general thing? Like, instead of having to keep saying, "Hold, hold, hold," I would... I'm interested in what the money is, but every one that's a hundred thousand dollars or more, could there be more explanation?
When we get to that item, we can get to it.
Just do it each hole. Okay.
Each of these... Each of these lines has a separate appropriation, and we're asking for decisions at the level of each of these separate appropriation lines.
Right.
There's detail in the budget book, but we're not dealing with the budget book.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
Hold on, town manager. Finance committee and reserve fund.
Hold.
Finance director, town accountant.
Hold.
Technology.
Hold.
Mary Beth, are you gonna make a hold on every item?
That's what I asked. That's why I was saying, could... To simplify it, say, all those who are a hundred thousand or more, can you just explain it with a little bit more detail? We don't have the book in front of us. I have no idea why the town manager needs four-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand dollars. I have no idea.
When you arrived, when you came this tonight, one of the things you were given was the detail in the town budget. Item by item, for each of the line items we are dealing with.
Okay. Well, I didn't see it. Sorry.
Time being short.
Yep.
However, let me start the process again. Because this now seems to be cleared up. I'm asking if you want to make a change or have a specific question concerning town manager and select board. Finance committee and reserve fund. Finance director. Technology. Assessor's office. Treasurer-collector. Town clerk elections. Conservation commission. Various boards and commissions. Planning board.
Hold.
Zoning board of appeals. Office of planning and community development.
Hold.
Police department.
Hold.
Fire department. Communications and emergency management. Building inspector. Animal control. Department of Public Works.
Can I put a hold?
Yes. Health department. Council on aging. Veterans affairs.
Hold.
Human services. Libraries. Parks and recreation. Insurance. Debt service. Retirement. Retirement. Celebrations, seasonal events, and band programs. Okay, seeing none on that. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, six items on which there has been a hold. Otherwise, there are no questions or amendments on the rest, I will call for a vote now on all the things which have not been held, and then we'll go after the held items and deal with them one at a time. These are the individual appropriations on the list on which no one has called for a hold. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Those are adopted unanimously at seven fifty-three, now let's go through the held items. First held item was the planning board, please come to the microphone and state your question or-
James Bailey, Housatonic, Massachusetts.
Or change.
I request that we remove thirteen hundred and fifty dollars from the planning board, and transfer it to the veterans affairs, for a total of one hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, please.
Do you have that amendment in writing, please? I need the amendment in writing. Yes. What can I do with this? There it is, sorry. Please think ahead, amendments need to be in writing, and it's a lot faster if they get here before you make the amendment than afterwards. You're gonna keep, I need to keep this. Motion is to, I'm sorry, your motion does not include an amount. Thirteen fifty. Okay, the motion is to remove thirteen hundred and fifty dollars from the line for the planning board, and add that amount to the line for veterans affairs. Is that the motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to reduce the line for the planning board by thirteen fifty, and increase veterans affairs by that same amount. Could you, Jim, would you want to speak to your motion?
Thank you. I just feel that that amount for the veterans falls way short of everything they deserve, and we'll take any little bit we can get, and I really appreciate your support, thank you.
Any other discussion on this particular item? Brandy?
Brandy Nelson, twenty-eight Barrington Place, planning board chair, although I don't disagree with Mr. Bailey, that veterans' causes are extremely worthy, and I'm happy to support them financially, I just ask that this motion be declined and not passed, because our budget is not for planning board members, who are all volunteers. This budget line item pays for our secretary, Kim Shaw, who is an absolute gem as an employee here in town. She's been on the board for nearly two decades, she takes meticulous notes, she's an excellent resource as far as recollection on the history of various zoning matters in town, and as far as I'm concerned, we ask regularly that she be paid more, because she's such a valuable employee, so respectfully request this be denied.
Ed Abrams, fifteen Pleasant Street, I'm sort of speaking as a select board member, in that this year, the select board and the finance committee put forth an increase above what the veterans were asking for, so the current budget reflects actually an increase, again, above what was asked for originally, thank you.
Further discussion on this proposed amendment? To move, I'll call for a vote, the motion to amend is to move thirteen hundred and fifty dollars from the planning board line and add it to the veterans line. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, all those opposed? Motion for amendment fails at seven fifty-seven. The next held item is office of planning and community development. Who has put the hold on that?
I did. Pedro Pachano, five Abbey Hill Drive, I've got a question for Mr. Rembold, item eighty-four, affordable housing stipend, can you explain what those funds go for, go towards?
Mr. Rembold?
Mr. Moderator, Chris Rembold, assistant town manager, director of planning and community development. The affordable housing stipend pays for staff to staff the Affordable Housing Trust, it is not me, it is a separate position, it's a separate stipend for an existing position in town hall, person to take minutes, host meetings, and do administrative work for the Affordable Housing Trust.
That satisfy your question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. There was a hold on police department. Question is over here on my right.
Charles Williamson, forty-eight Blue Hill Road. I got a question on the police department, there's a couple of questions I got to ask here. One is, I see the general raises for town employees is around four percent, we just got a new chief police, and we're giving him a twelve percent, so I imagine he must have done something special in a couple of months he's been on duty. How would you give somebody twelve percent? I wish you'd give me twelve percent break on my taxes. And the other question is, you've got down here, a sergeant, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. Now, I assume that's more than one sergeant. If you're opening up a new position for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I want to know what he's gonna be doing. That's my question, it seems, we're putting a lot of money into the police department, and I asked last year, is take some of the money, all the money if you could, from your marijuana shops, and put it into the police department, take it off our town budget. But now you have to put it to the rehabilitation of druggies, I guess. My question is, why do we give out twelve percent raises, and what's the hundred percent?
Okay, two questions there about the pay for the police chief and the sergeants. Explanation from the town staff? Microphone?
I'd like to address the four percent that you mentioned of all employees getting an increase, that actually is not an accurate number, it's a combination of the two percent that we received for fiscal twenty-one, and another two percent for fiscal twenty-two. Last year, when we brought it before you, at budget time, the money was all allocated under a line item in the finance committee's budget called contingency, because the collective bargaining agreements hadn't been settled at that time. So this just took the money and spread it into the fiscal twenty-one budget. So it's not a four percent increase, it's a two percent. The town manager will address the other increase on the police chief.
So the other increase on the police chief salary line is because we advertised the position, when we recruited for this position, to its, a maximum of a hundred and five thousand. The one oh seven one reflects that one hundred and five thousand, plus a two percent increase. And to address the second line, the sergeant's line, that is, I believe, for two sergeants. Is that correct? That's, that's correct, that's for two sergeants, that's not an individual salary.
Thank you. Any other questions about the police department line? Department of public works, I believe there is a motion.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Anna Dwyer, twenty-six Kirk Street in Housatonic, but I'm actually speaking on behalf of the finance committee. I am making a motion to amend the main motion by increasing the Department of Public Works' budget by twenty-five thousand, to be allocated to the public buildings, the repair, building and grounds account, this is item one fifty-seven on the warrant, and which would bring the line item budget up to two million four hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight. And the rationale for this, this motion is that-
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to amend has been made, you hear me explain?
Yeah, I may explain. This is, this was brought to our attention as a budgetary need after the budgeting process this year, and this is for some repairs to maintain the former Housatonic school as much as possible in the short term, and this would involve the topping of the roof and the boarding of windows at the former school, and again, this is twenty-five thousand into that budget, we don't have those funds allocated for the budget yet, but it was the feeling of the finance committee that this was an important budget item.
Any further discussion of this, or questions about it? This will change the bottom line on the total, so let's be sure we have the bottom line total when we get to that point. Motion is to add twenty-five thousand dollars to the building and Department of Public Works' line. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, any opposed? Motion carries at eight oh three. Next held item is veterans affairs, is there a question that we didn't deal with before? Jim?
Nope, that was resolved in the first, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Abrams and the select board for adding to the funds, I really appreciate that, and all the veterans in the community and the taxpayers, thank you.
And the final held item is libraries. Is there a question or an amendment concerning libraries, please go to the microphone.
A question, please, of longevity, what does that pertain to, please? Name is Michael Monroe, PhD, nineteen Hemlock Hill Road, Great Barrington.
Recognized.
Thank you. Again, the question is, under libraries, longevity, eighteen hundred dollars, small amount, but curious what that pertains to. Thank you.
I'm sorry, the libraries is five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
And?
Parks and Recreation is a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
On the detail sheet, it says longevity eighteen hundred and twenty-
Oh, longevity, I'm sorry. Okay.
Please, explanation.
Question about the longevity.
I can speak to that, actually, the eighteen hundred was for the current fiscal year, it's actually being reduced to thirteen hundred, and what that is, is it's longevity for employees, when they've served five years with the town, they get an additional stipend for their number of years, from five years, ten years, but we had a change in personnel during the year, so the budget is reduced to reflect that.
The stipend is increased pay, then?
I'm so, I can't hear you.
Yes.
Stipend is increased pay.
For their years of service.
Understood, thank you.
Question on libraries?
Yes, just a question on-
Name and address, please.
Maureen Quigley, nine High Street. The, the budget for the library versus the budget for the board of health is very different, and the health agent, the job is a twenty-four, seven job. So I would just make a comment about the monies that are going to libraries versus monies that are going to the board of health, and we just came through a major pandemic, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or amendments on these two items? Okay, I'll call for a vote on the remain, on the held items, there has been one change, the addition of twenty-five thousand to Department of Public Works' total, making that twenty-four seventy-six eight seventy-eight. Adding that to the total means the total appropriation for the operating budget will be twelve million nine hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Fifty-three.
Nine fifty, twelve, twelve million nine fifty-three.
Twelve million nine fifty-three.
Eight eighty-eight.
Eight eighty-eight, she has an adding machine. The total is twelve million nine fifty-three eight eighty-eight. We're now voting on the remaining items for the operating budget, all those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you, any opposed? Thank you, the motion carries at eight oh seven. Article six, wastewater treatment plant operating budget.
Voted that the town appropriate from the receipts of the wastewater treatment plant the sums of money necessary for the operation of the sewer division for the ensuing fiscal year for the purposes outlined below. Wastewater treatment plant salaries, five hundred and three thousand four hundred and fifty, expenses, seven hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred, insurance benefits, three hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty, miscellaneous transfers, one hundred and eighty-three thousand six hundred, debt service, six hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred, for total wastewater treatment plant budget of two million four hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, I'll do the same drill for this that I did for the general operating budget, if you think you're going to have a question about an item on this list, please move toward the microphone right now, I'm going to go through and ask if there are any holds. Salaries. Expenses. Insurance and, please say hold if you actually have a hold, I can't see, on which?
Expenses.
Hold on expenses. Insurance and benefits.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, it's not that one I want.
Miscellaneous transfers. Debt service. Tell you what, let's deal with the held item on expenses and-
So the question is, are there any things in the funding for updating the wastewater treatment plan?
Mark?
Um, we got-
Mark, there's a question from the floor. Questions from the floor about-
Sean in Houston Public Works Superintendent.
There you go.
Could you repeat the question?
Are there any funds allocated for updating the wastewater, the wastewater treatment plan?
So, we have a enterprise system, so, so we have a sewer enterprise system, so the revenue generated by the usage goes into a special fund that we set aside, and we can choose to use that for capital expenses long-term, or you could bond for it.
When is the wastewater treatment plan going to be updated?
The treatment plant is due to be upgraded the next five years under a DEP mandate.
Take a look at Article nine, which is coming up.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions about the wastewater treatment plant operating budget? All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you, all those opposed? Motion carries at ten after eight. Article seven, capital items and borrowing.
Voted that the sum of one million five hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred is appropriated to pay the cost of undertaking various capital projects and acquiring various items of capital equipment as follows. One, making various street and bridge improvements at the approximate cost of seven hundred and twenty thousand, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow three hundred thousand, under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter forty-four, section seven-one, or any other authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and four hundred and twenty thousand shall be transferred from chapter ninety funds so-called. Two, making various building improvements at an approximate cost of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter forty-four, section seven-one, or any other authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Three, purchasing and equipping, equipping one new police cruiser at the cost of approximately forty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town raise and appropriate said, said funds. Four, acquiring three new portable radios for the police department, an approximate cost of twenty-five thousand one hundred, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, the town authorized the use of twenty-five thousand one hundred of free cash. Five, replacing seven vehicle laptops and tablets for the police department vehicles at approximate cost of thirty-two thousand one hundred, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town authorized the use of thirty-two thousand one hundred of free cash. Six, acquiring a new combination backhoe loader for the Department of Public Works at approximate cost of one hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and fifty, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter forty-four, section seven-one, or any other authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Seven, acquiring a new truck lift for the Department of Public Works at approximate cost- cost of 79,500, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amounts under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Eight, acquiring one new sidewalk plow and sander for the Department of Public Works at approximate cost of 124,300, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Nine, acquiring a ticket kiosk for the transfer station at approximate cost of 53,000, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Ten, making park and open space improvements at approximate cost of 40,000, and to meet this appropriation, the town authorized the use of $40,000 of free cash. The amounts authorized to be borrowed by this vote are not necessar... Oh, excuse me, are necessarily estimates, and as such, the Select Board is authorized to borrow more for any project and less for another, so long as, in its judgment, each project to be funded in whole or in part by borrowing can be completed within the total amount authorized to be expended by this vote. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the Mass. General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
From the... Okay. Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for the motion for the capital items and borrowing article. I will do the same drill for this as I did for the others. If one of these 10 items is something in which you have a question or an inquiry, please, at this point, or a possible change, please go to the microphones. Get ready, get ready to say hold when I get to it. Number one, street and bridge improvements. Number one is held. Number two, building improvements. Number three, police cruiser. Number four, portable radios for the police department. Number five, vehicle laptops for the police department. Number six, backhoe loader. Number seven, truck lift. Number eight, sidewalk plow and sander. Number nine, ticket kiosk for the transfer station. Hold. Number 10, park and open space improvements. Hold on that. There are three items held. Rather than take two votes because it requires a secret ballot and that's painful, let's take these up and discuss them one at a time before we take the vote in full motion. Number one, street and bridge improvements. If you have a question or a change, please come to the microphone and identify yourself.
I'm Annie Alquist, 219 South Street in Husatonic. I'm just curious what the street and bridge improvements are, and more specifically, when we're going to get the Division Street Bridge, the Cottage Street Bridge, and the bridge on Route 7 back to full working order.
Shaun Van Dusen.
Shaun Van Dusen, Public Works Superintendent. In terms of the Division Street Bridge, the engineering should be done this fall, which will mean a winter-time bid, late fall, early winter bid, and construction will start soon thereafter with the completion by late next spring or summer. The Cottage Street Bridge is a bridge that Mass. DOT is fixing, and their timeline, I believe, is three years away. The bridge in the center of town is under Mass. DOT's control, so we don't really have a lot to say over when that bridge is going to be fixed, but they've said late June, early July this year. In terms of the specific roads that we're hoping to do this year, this money is actually probably going to be subsidizing two bids that are already currently out, totaling approximately $3 million. So the money that we are asking to be allocated here is going to probably help complete the construction projects on Rosser, Elm Court, the Triplex parking lot, Bentley Ave, Bridge Street, as well as the area around Berkshire Heights. And there's $300,000 additionally allocated for engineering specifically to make sure that we are doing the best we can to get the work done in front of bridges being closed.
There's street and bridge improvements. Okay. Questions on the ticket kiosk for the transfer station?
Bill Dunbar, 4 Omega Road. I just have a question. I'm wondering if there's any reason why the purpose of having this kiosk couldn't be substituted by having something on the town hall website that people could, you know, pay money to the way they pay real estate taxes, rather than sticking a machine up there that's going to conk out in five years and need replacement?
Explanation from the staff.
So, I believe that this ticket kiosk is done in several other municipalities, and it's much more convenient than something online. You'll be able to go there on a weekend and put a credit card in and get a ticket, an individual ticket, for your trash bag, or pay for a yearly annual sticker.
That's the reason? Staff thinks it's convenient.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
How is it going to be verified that people are residents of the town when they're going up to this kiosk?
So the employees that are up there will be able to verify that the people using the kiosk are residents or own property, but they won't be taking cash or exchanging any funds.
Any other questions about item nine on the kiosk?
It's more of a comment than a question. Carol McLunchy, 10 Beacon Hill. I'm really pleased to see this because there's been very little oversight in checking people when they go there. I go Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. Oftentimes, there are people there who do not have permit stickers on their vehicles. There is no one there when they're dumping their trash. They're in the office, and I feel like whatever money it costs for this, it'll be made up very quickly by having people actually paying when they use the transfer station. And I seriously am concerned that there have been too many of us who have been subsidizing others who have not been paying for their trash. Thank you.
Any questions or proposed changes on this item? Yes?
Proposed change to reallocate the funds to the Health Department.
Well, this is the capital spending item. I'm not sure if that's even possible. I'm sorry, name and address, please.
Maureen Quigley, 9 High Street.
I'm sorry, you live in West Stockbridge, I believe, correct?
I'm on the town line, yes.
You're on the West Stockbridge side of the town line, yes?
I am.
Thank you. Uh... Any further questions?
That still doesn't discount that I have a voice.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
And what happens to houses from where I live affects me.
It's one of these arbitrary realities of a world divided the way it is, that the boundary line means people who get to speak and vote here are the people who live and vote in Great Barrington. Any further questions on item nine? Item 10, parks and open space improvements.
Mr. Wise, Karen Smith, 5 Monument Valley Road. I'm speaking to two issues. One is the park and rec expenditure, which is going to upgrade and get all the baseball fields straightened out. And the other thing, which is, I know I'm going to get in trouble for this, but that's the way it goes. For 28 years, we've asked for public bathrooms in this town, and in this budget line item is money to put in public bathrooms for people downtown. And I think it's about time we knew it and we deal with it, whether it's pot for potties or cash for whatever. I think it's important. I will shut up in 30 seconds, I promise.
In this item?
It's enough. I believe it's in there. Oh, it isn't? Well, then I've been advised incorrectly twice. It's okay. Just get the public bathrooms built.
That item is where?
Speak. It's in the buildings in...
It's in building improvements.
Building, thank you.
Okay, there it is. To my right, Annie?
Yeah, I had a question. Annie Alquist, 219 South Street, Husatonic. I'm just curious what improvements are going to happen to what parks?
Uh-huh. Parks Department, one of... Shaun.
Shaun Van Dusen, Public Works Director. So there's currently three different projects happening simultaneously. We're doing engineering for improvements at the Dewey Park, at Grove Street, and also a large project at the Memorial Field. So that money will be going to one or all three of those projects.
Seeing no further questions about the capital items and borrowing item, borrowing article. This is a secret ballot item that requires a two-thirds vote. The tellers will be bringing the boxes around to you, so you don't need to get exercise. We will be using the blue ballot. Top one on your stack. And Jim Bailey, you left your ballots up here at the desk. If you want them back, want to vote, you better come get your ballots. He's out of luck. Except your blue one is missing. I don't know why. Ah, okay.
He's got it. He's got it.
You want the rest back? No, I... I... That's the rest of this.
While the ballot box is going around, I will ask Peter Dillon to start his presentation about the school district budget, which I'm sure he would like to make.
Thank you. So good evening, everybody. We've had a successful school year in spite of COVID-19. We alternated between remote, hybrid, and face-to-face learning. We provided tens of thousands of meals to students and families. We hosted the COVID-19 clinic at our newly named DuBois Middle School. We also developed a whole new set of ways to support students with technology. We conducted pool testing and managed several small clusters of positive students well. We had another great year in terms of post-secondary plans. Students are enrolling in a wide range of programs. I'm going to share a brief summary, and there'll be a full list on our website later. This year, we've got three students going to Northeastern, two to Middlebury, two to the University of Tampa, one to Harvard, one to Williams, one to Haverford, one to George Washington, one to the University of Rochester, and several to UMass and Berkshire Community College. From an arts perspective, we're sending students to Parsons, the Art Institute of Chicago, and Mass Arts. We're sending a student to Juilliard. We're sending students to technical programs at Hudson Valley Community College, Lincoln Institute, the Stockbridge School at UMass, the Mass. College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences, and we're sending a number of students to the military. Over the past five years, top choices have included BCC, UMass, Northeastern, UVM, Westfield State, Western New England, MCLA, Syracuse, BU, Middlebury, St. Lawrence, WPI, Berkeley, RIT, NYU, Bowdoin, and many others. We've advanced shifts in learning and our approaches to it. We've crafted a plan to eliminate levels next year for ninth grade, and have formed a team of 10 of our strongest teachers to support it. We're working with community partners on programs for students and the Yale Child Study Team to train administrators and teachers to support students' social-emotional growth. Our three towns in the five southern Berkshire towns have formed a regional school district planning board, and we're conducting studies and meeting regularly. We've received several competitive grants to support our work totaling nearly $3 million. Those include two grants from the Department of Justice for $818,546. We received two of four grants in all of Massachusetts. Just today, we learned of a $75,000 award from the Department of Elementary Secondary Ed for capital skills, so tied to vocational programming, and $52,000 from the Berkshire United Way for after-school programs. This year, we hired four new positions. John Bruno, our Director of Learning and Teaching. Kate Retzel will be our new Muddy Brook Principal. Cynthia Schwartz, the Assistant Principal, and Iona Smith is our town-funded Director of Wellness. We're also sad to see Tim Lee, our Muddy Brook Principal and GB resident, retire, and we wish Tim and his wife Janet the best. Great Barrington's share is, of the school budget, is $18,432,398. I'd like to thank you for your support over the years and ask that you support our proposed budget. We're doing remarkable things for kids and families. Thank you.
Thank you. I asked you to make that presentation while the vote was going on in order to save some time. Thank you for saying within three minutes. Is there a motion on Article 8?
Voted that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $17,928,812 for the operating assessment, and $586 for the capital assessment, for a total assessment of $18,432,398 of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District.
Motion has been made and seconded. Questions or discussion? Please go to the microphone if there are any. Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries at 8:29. Article 9, wastewater capital improvements.
Voted that the sum of $405,500 is appropriate to pay the cost of undertaking various capital projects and acquiring capital equipment in the wastewater department as follows. One, developing and implementing a sewer system management and maintenance plan at approximate cost of 185,500, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.7, or any other authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Two, replacing the sewer line at Castle Hill Avenue with an approximate cost of 20,000, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town authorized the use of 20,000 of retained earnings in the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Three, rehabilitating various sewer manholes at approximate cost of 200,000, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. The amounts authorized to be borrowed by this vote are not necess... Oh, excuse me, are necessarily estimates, and as such, the Select Board is authorized to borrow more for any project and less for another, so long as, in its judgment, each project to be funded in whole or in part by borrowing can be completed within the total amount authorized to be expended by this vote. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of insurance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the Mass. General Laws, therefore, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
A second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Questions or comment on the wastewater capital improvements motion? Before I call for a vote, I'm going to try to report the vote on the other capital item. Article 7 on capital items and borrowing has been adopted by a vote of 139 to 9. The motion carries by more than a two-thirds vote at 8:32. Seeing no discussion of the motion on Article 9 and wastewater capital improvements, this one also requires a secret ballot because it's borrowing money. This one will be the purple ballot. And again, the tellers will come around with the boxes, and because it's borrowing money, this requires a two-thirds vote. We're voting now on the wastewater capital improvements motion. We're voting now on the wastewater capital improvements motion. Because this will take a little while, let's continue moving through the next few motions, bearing in mind that when the person comes by with the box, you're voting on Article 9. We're now moving forward to Article 10.
Voted that the town authorized the use of $3,525,000 in free cash to reduce the tax levy for fiscal year 2022.
A second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to use $3,525,000 in free cash to reduce the tax levy. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your card, and please don't drop your purple thing. Thank you. All opposed? That motion carries at 8:33. Article 10. Is there a motion for Article 10, marijuana-free cash for community programs?
I think, is that Article 11?
Article 11, free cash for community programs. It's getting light, folks, it's not light up here.
Voted that the town appropriate and authorize the use of $350,000 in free cash, representing amounts received under host community agreements with marijuana establishments to fund various community programs under an application and approval process to be administered by the town manager.
Motion has been made and seconded. Does someone on the staff like to explain this motion? This item?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This year, we're looking to appropriate $350,000 in community impact funding, which is up from last year's $185,000. This is the 3% of taxes collected, the other 3% of taxes collected from cannabis sales here in Great Barrington. And under CCC, or Cannabis Control Commission Guidelines, we're required to use these funds to offset the negative impacts of cannabis in our town. So this money goes to support programs such as substance use and abuse education, prevention, and specifically, youth prevention. Last year, I appointed a committee of five members to help me review these applications from local organizations and make a recommendation, and we were able to award the full $185,000 last year to Berkshire Hills Regional School District, Railroad Street Youth Project, Berkshire South, Vim, and Construct.
Discussion or questions about the motion on Article 11? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your cards, please. Thank you. All opposed? Motion carries at 8:35. Article 12 on the Southern Berkshire Ambulance Service appropriation.
Voted that the town raise and appropriate $25,000 to support the operation of the Southern Berkshire Ambulance Services, Southern Berkshire Ambulance Squad Incorporated.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Questions about the ambulance squad appropriation? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed? Motion carries at 8:36. Article 13, vocational education, tuition, and transportation.
Voted that the town raise and appropriate $65,000 to fund the fiscal year 2022 tuition and transportation costs for out-of-district vocational education in accordance with Chapter 74 of Massachusetts General Laws.
Motion has been made and seconded. Questions or discussion? Tate, this is your chance. It's not necessary, though. Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed? Motion carries at 8:37. Article 14, prior-year invoices.
Voted that the town authorized the payment of fiscal-- excuse me, that the town authorized the payment of prior fiscal year invoices from the fiscal year '21 operating budgets of various town departments as follows. In the Department of Public Works, $427.83 to the Great Barrington Fire District, account number 01192-52310. $325 to Andrus Power Solutions. $87 to the Great Barrington Fire District. $690.50 to Lipinski Electric Incorporated. $7,330 to Haupt Tree Company. In the wastewater division, $792 to GIR USA Incorporated. $58.89 to the Great Barrington Fire District. In technology, $1,000 to Halagon.
Motion has been made and seconded. Other questions or discussion about this item? Before we vote, I will tell you this is a bit of an odd item in that it requires a four-fifths majority. If this is unanimous, that's easy to count. If it's not, we'll send the tellers around. That's just a hint. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? You got the hint. Motion passes unanimously at 8:38. Article 15.
Voted that the town appropriate and authorize the transfer of $200,000 from free cash for deposit into the stabilization fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to deposit $200,000 in the stabilization fund from free cash. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously at 8:39. We have the vote on Article 9, which is the borrowing authority for the wastewater capital items. That motion was adopted by a vote of 136 to 4. It passes by a three, two-thirds majority. Vote being announced at 8:39. We are on 16. Article 16.
Voted that the town appropriate and authorize the transfer of $200,000 from free cash for deposit into the capital stabilization fund.
Motion made and seconded to deposit $200,000 in the capital stabilization fund. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously at 8:40. Article 17, parking lot appropriation and land purchase.
Voted that the sum of $1190,000 is appropriate to purchase land for and construct a municipal parking lot, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $865,000 under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and $325,000 shall be transferred from the sale of real estate fund and provided that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of Massachusetts General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would someone on the staff like to explain this? Mr. Bransky?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You should have received in your warrant this evening a packet titled Article 17, Acquisition and Construction of a Downtown Parking Lot. I won't read that verbatim, but that contains quite a bit of information on this article that you may want to look over as we get prepared here to debate. And I just wanted to give a little background on this before we do move on to discussion. Downtown parking has been identified over the past two years as a high priority during our strategic planning sessions. And as a result of that, the staff has been researching options and looking for solutions to downtown parking, one of which is to purchase and develop a vacant two-acre parcel just behind the Castle Street parking lot. And the Select Board, rather than taking a position on this during budget season, voted to bring this forward to you tonight, to voters, to debate and decide. So there are a few comments and questions that I've received over the past couple of months during budget season that I'd like to just share with you, because many of you may have the same questions. Number one, why are we proposing to construct a parking lot in a residential zone? This two-acre site is actually a vacant lot just over the railroad tracks in an I-2 zone, so it's, in fact, a light industrial zone. It is not a residential zone. Will the town clear the wooded area and pave the entire parcel? And the answer is no. If approved, we're proposing to utilize only about 25% of this property. The trees would remain, and the balance of this space would remain as green space. And you'll see there's a nice photo in your packet of the amount of this parcel that we're proposing to use. Another question I've heard is leasing, and why can't we just lease space or ask property owners to allow the public to park in private lots? And my response to that is that leasing would be almost as expensive, and neither of these options are long-term solutions. The final question here, no one will park there, or comment, no one will park there, and everyone wants to park closer to their destination. This lot, if approved, of course, would allow for store and restaurant owners and staff to park long-term, meaning eight, 10, or more hours. It would also allow second- and third-story office staff to park for eight, 10, or more hours. It would allow for downtown residents to park long-term, and visitors wishing to perhaps shop, eat, take in a movie, or catch a live performance in town, to do so without the risk of being ticketed. It would free up several one-, two-, and four-hour spots for those seeking more short-term options. So while most of what I'm about to say is noted in the handout we provided you earlier, I just wanted to also mention some highlights. The purchase price for this land is $850,000. The cost to develop this land would be roughly $340,000, for a total of $1190,000. If approved, we would offset a portion of this cost by using $325,000 in savings from the sale of real estate years ago. This proposal would provide roughly 50 new parking stalls in our downtown area, and the revenue expected to be generated, while minor, is about $3,700 per year. The total cost, and I'm sure this is a question many of you have, the total cost to a home valued at roughly $350,000, so the average taxpayer, is about $16.50 per year. And just to conclude, once this parking lot is paid off, and we're proposing this to be paid in a 15-year bond, this would be an asset and would remain parking and something we would retain control of indefinitely. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I expect there will be some discussion. Beginning on my left.
This is Pedro Bachana, five Abbey Hill Drive. Article 17 is a retrograde method of addressing parking by throwing money at a problem that is not well-identified. Asking us to allocate 1.2 million through taxation, borrowing, or the use of available funds to store automobiles indicates that town administrators are less concerned with housing, infrastructure, or educating the teenagers of our region in school that provides a healthy and safe place for them to learn. Aside from Great Barrington's many pressing infrastructure needs, $24,000 per space can certainly help many seniors secure housing or make improvements which help keep them in place. The cost of five spots would go a long way towards down payment assistance for people who can afford a mortgage payment, but not the down payment. The cost of 10 spots would go a long way towards upgrades to properties under the control of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. A few more spots, and maybe they could even build a house. This money can also go a long way towards restoring and remediating town properties such as Reed Cleaners, Cook's Garage, or the Husatonic School in order to make them viable for a business or community need to be met while preserving anchors of the town's history. Or how about a loan or grant program designed to encourage black entrepreneurs to move to the Berkshires and start businesses in Great Barrington? Or how about proposing to use some money to create sidewalk equity between Husatonic and Great Barrington? This proposal indicates that Town Hall is more interested in accommodating the needs of automobiles than our real pressing needs. A few things that are not mentioned in the proposal. The lot under consideration is not accessible to elderly community, nor to those with mobility impairments. Access to downtown business is cumbersome from that location and will not guarantee that the current available spots within downtown will become less desirable, even to shopkeepers and employees. The quickest access to downtown from the lot is over the tracks. To access the site, a driver has to actually leave downtown and drive through a residential neighborhood. Did I mention it's $24,000 per parking spot? We currently have over 1,000 existing parking spots downtown, 60% of which are private, which indicates that we have parking, we're just not using it in an intelligent way. We have not been presented with a study or empirical evidence that the parking purpose is necessary. I submitted a proposed parking plan in September, which the Select Board has yet to address. One of the items I call for is to establish a parking management plan similar to what was done in Pittsfield, which will identify existing parking conditions, study parking patterns, and create wayfinding so we can have factual information about parking trends downtown. We need to make informed decisions about parking, especially as land gets more scarce and expensive and as municipal budgets are squeezed. Please vote down Article 17.
Perfect timing for three minutes. Thank you, Pedro.
Yes.
To my right.
Denise Forbes, 325 North Plain Road. I want to say, Pedro, you said it all, and we agree 100% with you. Vote no for Article 17. Thank you.
Also economical. To my left.
Betsy Andrews. I'm the Executive Director for the Southern Berkshire Chamber of Commerce.
And I recognize Betsy to speak on this item.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Where I totally sympathize with everybody, taxes are high. There's so many places a dollar could go. There's so many good things out there that we could spend money on. I think this is where our town is extremely short-sighted. Think of anywhere you go to visit, anywhere. You pull into town, and there's a parking sign. It directs you to public parking in a place where you really don't know where you are. We don't have that. We've never had that. Now, look back at our history. We've been very short-sighted over the years. We had 43 parking spots that we spent $3,000 a year on, and the Select Board in the late '90s decided to vote that down. So then we were left to park on the street. Slowly, one by one, every parking spot that the local people knew where to go to has slowly disappeared. We no longer park in Wheeler &amp; Taylor. We no longer park in Foster's. We no longer can park behind the old firehouse. We no longer can park at the end of Railroad Street where it used to be a dirt area. Everything is locked up, gated, private. It is impossible for the average working person to find a parking spot. After circling four times, I called Marf's office and said, this is insane. Something has got to happen. If it's for the employees, we've got to help them have a place to park. If it's for the people entering our town who want to visit, possibly live here, or just come back to visit, we have to make it feasible for them to come and park and walk around and enjoy our area. We do not have that. I'm not saying that property is the best option, and I agree, it's very expensive. But we have to come up with something. There's no direction for residents, for visitors, and there's no help for the average person working. Seven years ago, when I signed up to be on the Parking Commission, myself and the rest of the committee literally walked the road. We counted every parking spot, two-hour, four-hour, overnight, all day. We then figured out how many employees were in town at that time, and we put a person in each parking spot. At the end of the day, we were left with 12 parking spots for the average person to come into town and park, which does not work. Then we redid Main Street, and we lost 17 parking spots, I believe. You can correct me if that's wrong. This is a problem. We really need to address it. And I think if you vote this down today, okay, but we need to come up with-- And I think if you vote this down today, okay, but we need to come up with another plan. This is really one of the last remaining properties available that is close to town that could be applicable to this situation. Thank you.
To my right.
Eileen, excuse me, Eileen Mooney, 2 Bernard Gibbons Drive. At a Finance Committee meeting, I think, somebody asked about the usability of the Wheeler and Taylor site and I wondered if that had been investigated.
You have a question?
That's my question.
Okay. Eileen has a question about the use of the Wheeler and Taylor site. Anybody have an answer?
We addressed that in the presentation.
I'm told it was in the presentation, so it's in your packet, it must be there somewhere.
Well, I heard a reference, but I was wondering whether there had been any.
Anything more to say?
Specific discussion about leasing the spaces.
I guess I could just add that we did reach out to Wheeler and Taylor to discuss leasing spaces. It would still be quite expensive and of course not a long-term solution. And the spaces that they were, that we were offered are the lower spaces at the bottom of their parking lot, which are actually behind what's now the Berkshire Co-op parking lot. So, a little further away, again, it is an option for us to lease spaces but not a permanent solution.
Thank you.
Garfield.
Garfield Reed, 107 Castle Hill Avenue, speaking as a citizen. I have to agree 100% with Pedro, I think there's much better ways to spend our money than a parking lot. And with the infinite wisdom, we cut out 17 parking spots, now here we are asking to spend over a million dollars for, for parking. There are much more things that could utilize that money with, as Pedro said, and it does appear that we would be not honoring affordable housing and other items that he had mentioned. I think it's a waste of time and we talk about this ad nauseam. I've been here 43 years, I have not yet to not have a parking spot, find a parking spot in town. I think there's a better use of the money and we need to utilize it in a different way than not in a parking lot.
At the tables, Finance Committee.
Yes, this is Ann O'Dwyer, Chair of the Finance Committee, also 26 Kirk Street in Husatonic. And this did come in front of the Finance Committee as well and the Finance Committee did not have a very favorable view of this proposal. Our concern, and any, and one on the committee can feel free to disagree with me if you want, but our concern was that this really almost doubles the capital expenditures for this year and we have some significant capital expenses coming up in the future and this, we agree with others who have spoken, that this is just not really the best use of our capital funds.
To my right, Janice, who has been recognized to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you for the recognition to speak. Janice Martenson, representing the Mahawi Performing Arts Center on 14 Castle Street. I agree with the gentleman who said he'd never had trouble finding a parking place in town, neither have I in 23 years, but I only park short-term and I'm local. And I can tell you that we have a lot of people coming into town to do business who are not familiar with every little hidden space in Great Barrington, people who have mobility issues. And we hear all the time at the Mahawi about how reluctant people are to come to Great Barrington to do business because they believe they will not be able to park. And I know that in conversation with other businesses in town, that that's also the case. And this isn't, just to be clear, about enriching businesses, it's about parking spaces for people who work in those businesses and it's about the jobs that those businesses support. The Mahawi, as a small example, punches well above its weight class in terms of economic impact, bringing more than three times its annual budget back to this region in jobs and other benefits. We have about 12 employees, but we support the equivalent directly and indirectly of more than 100 jobs. So when we think about parking, we should be thinking about employment in this area and revenues in this area. So thank you for letting me speak, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Other side.
Hi, Lori Harrison, 36 Castle Lane. So my, what I have to say has mostly its questions. So I'm concerned about the access, I live on Castle Lane, which is actually Railroad Avenue, and although on the picture it looks like that's the green space, I just want verification that there will not be access to that green space by people driving from Railroad Ave and Castle Lane. So that's number one. And I have concerns about overnight stays for cars when they can park long-term, I think, I think you said eight or 10 hours. I just would want to make sure that there was clear signage and police oversight that cars would not be there overnight. And thirdly, that is there any guarantee that that green space for the balance of the property stay green space? Perhaps a dog park or something like that that everyone could, could utilize? That's, that's, those are what my questions.
Thank you, three questions. Tom Staff want to answer?
Access to this lot is being proposed from the Castle Hill side, not from the Railroad Ave side. And the Board, of course, could discuss other options for that green space in the future.
The other two questions concerning overnight and concerning preservation of the green space. Two other questions, one concerning controlling overnight parking, the other one concerning commitments to using the remaining spaces green space.
The overnight parking we can certainly address through enforcement and through signage.
And the third question was whether, does any guarantee that the remaining part of the property would be used for a, she said, green space kind of a purpose?
I would say we're not that far along in discussions yet, but our proposal at this point is to just use the remaining space for open green space. If the Board decided to use it for some other purpose, we could, yes.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. On this side, Holly.
Holly, Holly Hamer, 99 Seekonk Cross Road. I was part of the downtown business community for many years, long enough to remember some 25 years ago when this same lot was proposed for sale to the town as a parking lot, but the town turned it down because people felt the price was too high. I believe it was $50,000 then. It's a lot more now. I would hate to see us make the same mistake that we did then, not to seize this opportunity. It's not just about parking, it's not just about employment, it's not just about Great Barrington, it's about the entire community. And if people can't park or they feel they can't, whether you go around and show them that there actually are spaces or not, if they feel there's a parking issue, they will seek other places to spend their dollars and to spend their time. And I feel that downtown Great Barrington is what people think about, the image that they see when they think about Great Barrington fondly and with love and with feeling because of how nice and wonderful it is here, they think about downtown. And we've done a fantastic job preserving this town and the looks of this town. A lot of it's through CPA money as we spent tonight. And I think that if we, if we want to show that we care about this town and that we see it's, we want everybody else to be able to enjoy it, then I think it's important to make this decision, to vote yes on this tonight. Thanks.
My left, is that Mr. Monroe?
Yes, it is, thank you. 19 Emlock Hill Road. There's many things that have been said, so I will try not to repeat them, but it strikes me as, and I will use the word laughable, that 50 parking spaces are going to make any significant difference in parking situation. I also would question traffic flow and people trying to access that parking. And I think it raises a question of, is Great Barrington Village for locals or is it to be an avenue for people to visit and accommodate them? Because it does change the character. My other statement in regards to this is, I would like to know how much of the total budget is debt. This would add to the debt, is my understanding, and of the total that we're spending or agreeing to tonight, how much of that is bonds and debt? What percent? I'm gathering it's pretty significant from what I can tell by going through the papers. Can I have an answer on that, please?
Well, we just voted to add to the debt, is there a quick answer on?
I think I can answer that. Michael? Yeah, I would say it's approximately 10% of the operating budget.
And the operating budget, is that the 13 million or is that the 13 plus 17?
Is that the debt service?
That's, so it's about the, it's, so it's about, for the coming year it'll be about So, out of a total budget of $12,900, we've increased it a little bit on 184.
So it's about 1/6 or 16% in round numbers?
Okay.
Then, then I'm confused, please, about, I don't want to change the subject, but the 17 million that went for the school district, where did that come from?
You're new to town, that is from a different universe.
Right.
Okay, thank you, very fine, thank you for your answers.
To my right.
Stephanie Bosco, 22 Avery Lane. I have a question. How did you arrive, or whoever planned this, how did you arrive at a $2 per day fee? It seems like a real bargain to me for something that the town is paying for. When I worked in downtown Pittsfield 30 years ago, I paid a dollar a day for parking. I'm sure that's a lot more now. And when I go to visit various small towns in Massachusetts and other states, when I can't find on-street parking and I have to go into a lot, I end up paying a lot more than the equivalent of $2 a day. And I think it's very generous, but since financing this is an issue, I'm curious why it's such a bargain to park there.
Thank you. Is there a response about the projected fee?
Yes, we, we simply budgeted the projected charge very conservative, lowly, conservatively. It may be more if we do charge. It's just being conservative.
Thank you.
Ping pong again, to my left.
Mark Cohen, 10 Warren Avenue. I've been a business owner on Railroad Street for, since the mid-1980s. And we've been discussing the problem of parking since then, the mid, mid 80s. And I've gotten plenty of feedback from people who have worked for me, from other store owners, and from the general public for over 30 years, that it is a problem finding parking downtown. And I'm just, you know, very happy that finally there's a possible solution to dealing with that, because it's been an issue for a long time. Now, we can come up with alternatives for the use of money that may seem morally more, you know, more important, but you can do that with a lot of things. Yes, there probably is a more morally imperative need for that money that we can come up with, but it's an issue that's been, you know, here for a long time and, and it needs, it needs a solution. And I, this finally, this is the first time that there's actually been brought to a town meeting, as far as I can remember, a feasible solution to this problem. So, I just hope that, you know, people here can see it's a need that has to be dealt with and it's been affecting downtown, it's been affecting Great Barrington for a long time.
Thank you. To my right.
Jenny Clark, I live on Oak Street. I'm speaking as a former Chair of the, one of the Parking Committees that's existed in the town over many decades. And in 2014, I helped to chair it. The business people in this town, particularly the retailers, are my heroes and I know they are fighting a very difficult battle around bringing people to town. I really worry that if people vote for this, we will not have given it enough deliberation and, and careful thinking about the alternatives that would be less expensive. In 2014, as Betsy alluded, we did a lot of research. I'm not remembering the figures quite the way she is, but I do remember thinking that our Spot Saver Program that we developed, which encouraged employees of, of the downtown businesses to park outside the main core, leaving parking on the street in the main core available for shoppers, to be a success. And it was a volunteer-led effort. If this were given some steroids and given more strength and more marketing, I think it could be very powerful. And I think that the town really should go through a more refined process for solving this problem than throwing it to us, a small body of people here on a summer night and we just don't have enough information. I think we need to go deeper to get at this solution. Thank you.
My left.
James Harris, 105 Ticonic. The town already has a parking lot, in fact, it's called State Road. The traffic there has been dreadful this, this year. I think we should put more, as much thought into getting people out of town rather than having to stay here, because a lot of people in that, a lot of people in those traffic jams aren't going to come back to Great Barrington because of the traffic and the Cockamamie Division Street Bridge anyway. Also, it's, I think it's sort of weird that we're talking about spending over a million dollars on a parking lot in the shadow of this wonderful school that's fallen apart. It's where we spend our money, we've got to think about it a little bit. Also, the third point, paved paradise, put up a parking lot. Thank you.
To my right, hopefully it's a point that hasn't been made yet.
Sure. Hi, my name is Gene Carr, 6 Knob Hill Road. I'm going to speak to you on behalf.
Do you have permission to speak?
Thank you.
Your question got it.
Thank you. I want to speak on behalf of entrepreneurs. I'm a, I'm a three-time entrepreneur, I've started businesses and business owners who think about coming to Great Barrington think about risk. And they weigh that risk against where they should open their businesses. In Great Barrington, in Hudson, in Poughkeepsie, they look to see what are the amenities that make this town great, that are going to allow them to take the risk of their own personal money and that of their friends and investors and create a business that actually will succeed. Now, I've been here for 10 years, we all are watching many entrepreneurs starting businesses in downtown Great Barrington and I personally find it rather exciting. But if you talk to these people, they have taken their life savings and their time and their effort to take a bet on Great Barrington. And so I hope that as you think about this, this vote tonight, you will not think about this year or next year or whether the school needs a new roof or whether the money could be used for something else. You'll think about the next five to 10 to 15 years' worth of entrepreneurs that are going to come and invest in this town to build businesses that will attract locals and that will attract tourists, that will add to the tax rolls and will make this town even more vibrant than it is today. I'm an optimist about the future of Great Barrington and doing this is a very small expense against a really terrific future. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one at my left, and last person on the right.
Michael Citrin, 90 Castle Hill Avenue. I was hoping someone on the dais could give us a sense of how the purchase price of $850,000 was reached for the two acres of land. Thank you.
Question is how was the purchase price reached? Can that be answered?
The purchase price is estimated based on conversations that town officials, Town Manager and myself have had with that property owner. And it's based on a contract that that property owner had recently at that same price for that same property and does seem to be the going rate for that property. And so that's how we've identified that purchase price.
Thank you. Somebody has appeared with something new to say?
Yes, sir. Dale Colleton, 212 North Plain Road, Great Barrington. Could I be recognized?
Yes, you may, because I think I know what you're talking about. Yes.
I am the unfortunate individual who owns that property. I acquired it in 1974. It's actually two properties. It's the originally, it's the Magadini Lot and also the Sweet Lot. Those properties were. Those properties were decrepit properties. I also, uh, owned and restored the Great Barrington train station 30 years ago, and built, uh, the Royal Bank of Canada building next to that. I have a lot of experience with parking. Uh, I'm a licensed contractor, uh, I'm a developer, I'm also a farmer. I live at 212 North Plain Road. I reckon, I now here, I have a couple of neighbors who don't like what I, what I do, apparently. Anyway, um, I took money out of my, addressing the gentleman who spoke a minute ago over there, I took my life savings, and I bought vacant land, I rehabilitated that land, there were wetlands issues, there were political issues, and I basically have mothballed that land since 1974. If I had left my funds in my retirement account, I would have a million six instead of eight fifty. I have done a lot of things in town, I was on the planning board for 10 years, um, I've rehabilitated 50 houses in South Berkshire, I've, uh, built several new houses, I've restored historic buildings, and, uh, I have a positive relationship with the town. I was, my effort in marketing this property to the town, is that I recognize that this is a one-shot deal for the town. Uh, if the town doesn't vote to buy this property, I think it's probably the last property that they can do this with. And then it'll be, something else will happen with it. And maybe that'll be more to the pleasure of these folks who get up and talk about how this should happen, and that should happen. There's been a lot of factual inaccuracy in all this, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for me to debate any of it, but, uh, I just want to say that I'm here to work with the town, to, to have them have this property, and, uh, would hope that you would vote accordingly to make this happen. Thank you.
On the right, Mr. Schifrin, do you have more to say? No, Dan?
Nope.
You had a question, it was answered, right?
He's, he's up.
Oh, oh, you, okay, go ahead.
Jorge Alcala, Alfred Road.
Okay, sorry.
I've only been a resident full-time in this town for about over 30 years. I've never been unable to find a parking spot, because I know where the parking spots are, and they are there. Instead of paying over a million dollars for a parking lot, why don't we try paying maybe a few tens of thousands, if that, on signage to direct visitors to where the parking is? I haven't heard that discussed, maybe there's some reason. I'd be interested in hearing. Thank you.
Answer about signs? We're treating that question as rhetorical, Dan?
Yeah, Daniel Bailey, 207 North Street, Housatonic. Question for the select board first. Back in, I believe it was the fall, you guys denied a special permit for a parking lot? How many spaces would have been, um, created?
What other questions do you have? Ask them all at once, please.
I'm sorry, yes. So the second question is, why does the select board of the town of Great Barrington, um, refuse to get appraisals for properties they seem to want to purchase? This is the second year in a row that you guys have put a purchase price out there on a thought, or a feeling. Maybe for, out of, um, sense of reality, you could, guys could actually get an appraisal done on something before you decide to buy it. And, second of all, this is for everybody. Um, I appreciate all the downtown merchants and, and the things that you guys do, but think about this. When you go on vacation yourself, do you call up that community and ask if there's adequate parking? Have you ever said, "I'm not going somewhere because there's not adequate parking"? Think about the people that are actually coming into this community. Most of them park miles from where they actually live, and don't seem to have a problem with that. But yet, when they come here, they have a problem walking a half a mile to the nearest parking spot. I live in Housatonic, I have to drive to Hous-, to Great Barrington. When I go there, I can actually find a parking spot. And I've done that for 40-something years. So, I encourage you to vote this down in a very sensible way. Thank you.
I'm going to treat those-
Mr. Moderator, I don't understand why you characterize my questions as rhetorical.
I looked at the-
I would appreciate an answer.
Well, I looked at the, at the staff, and they noted that they did not have answers to them. That's why.
Miss, that's different than a rhetorical question, so my question has no answer. Nobody apparently has investigated the question of signage to direct visitors to parking. I urge people to vote no.
Mr. Moderator, just to clarify, I was asking a real question of how many parking spaces that special permit that the, the select board denied.
Thank you. Question about parking spaces involved in a recent special permit decision. Is there an answer?
It was somewhere around 33 to 35 spaces.
33 to 35 is the answer.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else at the microphones, thank you for patience, I thought this would take an hour, it took 45 minutes. This is a secret ballot item, because it involves borrowing and purchasing real estate. For this, we will vote using the green stickers, and the tellers will come around to take your ballots. We're now voting on the motion on Article 17, Parking Lot Appropriation and Land Purchase. This requires a 2/3 majority, and the ballot boxes are coming around. While the vote is going around, let's proceed to Article 18, Community Preservation Act Reserves. Is there a motion?
Yeah, she's, she's on the-
Well-
She's got to make me run to get a goddamn ballot, I'm here. Hi, Karen Smith, good morning. Glasses. Voted that the town appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues the following amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, for the committee administrative expenses in FY '22, and reserve the future appropriation for community preservation projects, the following reserve amounts, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Reserves from FY '22 revenues for Historic Resources Reserve, $60,000. From FY '22 revenues for the Community Housing Reserve, $60,000. From FY '22 revenues for the Open Space Reserve, $60,000. Appropriations from FY '22 revenues for administrative expenses, $20,000. Balance of FY '22 revenues and FY '22 budgeted reserve, $345,000. Good evening, my name is-
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Karen, you may explain the motion.
Thanks so much. I'm Karen Smith, I serve as the Vice Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and administers the Community Preservation Act for the town. This year, we have three articles on the town meeting warrant, Articles 18, 19, and 20. You get to listen to me three times. I encourage you to take out the CPC report, which is the light mint-green handout you have received with tonight's warrant. The first article is what we call the housekeeping, or bookkeeping article, that ensures that we are meeting the letter of the CPA law, which states that each year, a town must spend reserve a minimum of 10% of our estimate revenues to each of the three CPA categories. Conservatively estimated, estimated revenue is $600,000, so 10% is $60,000 for each category. The article also recommends allocating an amount of up to 5% of the annual revenue to pay administrative costs, such as staff and legal support. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any further questions or discussion concerning this particular article on the reserves? Seeing none, I think I can still see cards. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed? Motion carries at 9:22. Article 19.
That the town appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund for FY '22, and the fund balance the following amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. One, affordable housing. Construct for rental assistance program and a micro loan program, subtotal affordable housing, $50,000. Historic resources. Town Historical Commission for Historic Properties Research and Documentation, $6,000. Town Archaeological Study for the Ramsdale Library, $9,800. First Congregational Church of Barrington for Restoration of Stone and Masonry Walls of the Mans, $240,859,000. Mahawi Performing Arts Center to replace the emergency exit doors. Six, the Clinton Church Restoration for the second phase of restoration work, $200,000. Total subtotal Historic Reserves, $471,659. Open Space and Recreation. Seven, town for the improvements to the Housatonic Rail Trail, $30,000. Town for the Lake Mansfield Water Quality Studies, $70,000. Conservation Commission for the McAllister Wildlife Refuge Preservation Project, $31,000. Subtotal, $131,30. Total subtotal of all three is $652,959.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further explanation before I go through them one at a time? I'm going to go through them one at a time.
I would be happy to do that. Yes, Mr. Moderator, Chris Remboldt speaking. The one CPA housing grant proposed this year is to construct, as you heard, which will continue its emergency rental assistance program, which is town-wide, and its micro loans program that helps build credit and equity. In historic, the grant for Historical Commission will pay for research and documentation of a variety of significant sites around town. The grant to Ramsdale Library for the town to complete, the town will complete an archaeological study of the library grounds, which is required in order to apply for state library grant funds for building improvements or site improvements. The grant for the Mans at the First Congregational Church on Main Street is for extensive exterior masonry and stone repairs. Maybe you've seen the wall on Pleasant Street, which has already failed, and the scaffolding on Main Street that is protecting pedestrians from the failure of the front wall. This grant will be matched by other sources raised by the church. And please note, the benefit of this project is the preservation of a landmark building significant to our downtown fabric. This grant does not fund the religious activities of the church. The grant to the Mahawi is for the emergency exit doors on the west side of the building. They will be replaced, keeping the historic building functional and serving as additional accesses and egresses. The grant for Clinton Church Restoration will go towards implementing Phase Two of that renovation project, including structural repairs. The CPA grant of $200,000 will be more than matched by over $400,000 from other, other sources. In Open Space and Recreation, for the Housatonic Rail Trail, the town will install a crushed stone path to improve accessibility, fix the ponding and mud issues on that trail, therefore completing that full loop, walking and riding loop in Housatonic. The grant for Lake Mansfield Water Quality Studies is an exciting program, a multi-year study with Simon's Rock College, experts and students, for the long-term preservation of that open space resource. And the final proposal tonight is for another round of the multi-year preservation effort, removing invasive plants at the 90-acre McAllister Wildlife Refuge. Thank you.
I'm good to go through these one at a time. If you have a question, or a proposed change, signal by hollering appropriately at the microphone, hold. Item one, construct. Item two, Historical Commission. Item three, Archaeological Study at Ramsdale Library. Item four, First Congregational Church Restoration of the Mans. Article five, item five, Mahawi exit doors. Item six, Clinton Church Restoration. Item seven, Housatonic Rail Trail improvements. Item eight, Lake Mansfield Water Quality. Item nine, McAllister Preservation Project. Tell you what, let's see if we can do those two separately right now. Item eight, on the Lake Mansfield Water Quality.
Mary Beth Merritt, 110 Christian Hill Road. I'm just curious why we need a water quality study there that's not a public water supply, and it sounds to me like we're just turning it into a recreation center, so what's that money actually going to study?
The question is, what's the motivation for a water quality study if it isn't a water, public water supply?
That's right. We, we're not proposing to study it for public drinking water. It studies the water quality and chemistry of the water, uh, how much dissolved oxygen, the health of the water for the ecosystem, how it supports the ecosystem, as well as what pollutants, if any, are in the water. Uh, it helps us judge the success of previous stormwater improvement efforts, as well as hopefully the success of future efforts. It will help us understand the changing temperature and other characteristics of the lake, as the climate warms, and this is an important recreation resource and cooling center for the town. Uh, so we believe that having these baseline studies in place is important for us to judge future efforts, and hopefully, if we need long-term plans for preserving the open space, we have the baseline to do that with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions about item eight? About item nine, on the McAllister Refuge?
Hi, my name is Krisha Kuzica, 18 Rosetter Street, Great Barrington. I've, uh, been walking that park for 20 years. The last four years, or since, I don't remember when, since that removal started, that place has been destroyed visually, and, um, as far as I know, also becoming a toxic dump for the roundup that is being used for removing some of the, uh, some of the plants. Um, the, uh, the views, the, uh, the, the way the mechanical removal is, uh, conducted, it creates rubble, it creates ruins of the nature. I don't know, how can we put more money into continuing this, um, without any plan to actually restore the, that park? As far as I know, right now, it's just being destroyed. And, believe me, I know everything about invasive plants. I'm using it, uh, I'm, um, I am dealing with invasive plants on the, on my property, I'm in a Sheffield Land Trust, that I'm missing, so I know everything, everything about it. I am just, uh, questioning the way it is being done, and it makes me wanting to vote against this whole thing, even though I agree with all the, all the points, because of that, what's happening on the McAllister Park.
Any other points to make about item number nine?
Well, I would actually, because, Mary Beth Merritt, um, I actually talked to some of the people who are working on that project, and it seems to me that there's been a significant destruction of bird habitat there. I used to walk there, but the, the whole contour of the land and the vegetation, in an effort to get rid of, like, bittersweet, has really trashed that place significantly, and I don't think we should keep going. Can we take this part out of the, uh, whatever it is?
This is your opportunity to make a motion to change something.
Oh, okay, I will make a motion to remove the, um, McAllister Wildlife Preservation Project money of $31,300. And yes, I have to write it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to delete the $31,300 of the McAllister property. Is there further discussion on this motion?
Mr. Moderator, is there anyone from the Concom who can speak to the, uh, invasive species removal efforts?
This is their time to do it.
Thank you.
If they're listening.
Good evening, my name is Shep Evans-Eleven, 219 Monument Valley Road. I'm Conservation Agent for the town of Great Barrington. The $31,000 project for the upcoming fiscal year is, I think it's the fourth, in a series of annual efforts to remove invasive species which had choked all of the useful habitat in the, in the middle of those open meadows. And the woodland was jammed with bittersweet, knotweed, barberry, privet, an endless stream of over, over-expanded vegetative invasive species. It's not pretty getting rid of invasive species, but we have a, we have a win that has happened. When we took out the hedgerow that ran across the middle of that meadow, between the upper meadow and the lower. And when, most recently, the native habitat restoration people went in and removed all the invasive undergrowth, substantial undergrowth in the lower meadow down below, we have, in the last two years, all of a sudden, found that we have grassland breeding birds, bobolings, meadow larks are expected soon. And furthermore, the ornithology people, the bird watchers and the Mass Audubon people and the Cornell University eBird that tracks important birding areas, has McAllister has been put on the map. And it's expected it's going to be, year after year, a much more important place for wildlife than it has been. Finally, with the help of Green Edgers, the trail system, which until very recently was, consisted mostly of up and down the road, down to the bottom and back up the same route, that was what was, most people were using. There is a woodland trail which is gonna turn that into, that experience into a loop trail. There's a small section, including a footbridge over an intermittent stream, going to be completed this summer. And I think you will find your experience, if you go walking there, you will find it a great deal more enjoyable in the years ahead than it may have been so far.
Is there conclusion?
I'll finish.
Thank you.
Second, finally, because of all the work we've done and because of the application of this money to open space and recreation, we now are eligible to receive grant monies from the Mass Division of Conservation and Recreation, Mass DCR, Forests and Parks. And.
Thank you very much.
We think you should support what's going on there. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to delete item nine? I think it's nine? Item nine. Seeing none, this is a majority vote issue, and I can still see reasonably well. All those in favor of this motion to delete item nine, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Motion fails. You'll now vote on the main motion to approve the nine items under Article 19. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries, not quite unanimously yet, whatever time it is right now, 9:36. We have five more items to go. I think they'll be fairly quick. Please stick around so we can keep our quorum and not have to come back on Thursday, I beg you. Article 20.
Voted that the town amend the vote taken under Article 19 of the warrant for the annual town meeting, held June 22, 2020, which approved an appropriation of $185,000 from FY-21 Community Preservation Act revenues to the Great Barrington Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the purpose of acquiring land on North Plain Road for affordable housing, so as to permit the expenditure of the unexpendated balance of the appropriation for design, engineering, and other pre-development expenses for an affordable housing project on such acquired land.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Explanation? Chris?
Last year, the town voted to appropriate $185,000 towards the purchase of this land. The housing trust intended to include some of those funds towards pre-development and permitting expenses, however, the vote last year was not clear that it included that, and so the housing trust came back to the CPC this year, the Community Preservation Committee, to correct that issue. The committee, as you heard, recommends the reappropriation so that the project can begin this year, this summer.
Questions or comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, all those opposed? Motion carries at 9:38. Before we get to Article 21, I can report that on Article 17 concerning the borrowing of authorization and so forth about the municipal parking lot, the vote was 47 in favor, 68 opposed. It did not make a two-thirds majority. That motion failed. Article 21. Microphone, please.
Voted that the town amend Chapter 91 of the Great Barrington Code, Town Clerk's fees by revising the fees listed in the Section 91-1, schedule for birth certificates, death certificates, and marriage certificates, as shown in the warrant for this town meeting.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Explanation from the town staff? From the clerk, in fact.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Up until the annual town meeting in 2017, the fee per vital record was $5. For those that might not know, a vital record is any birth, marriage, or death record. In 2017, the town clerk, Marie Ryan, proposed to increase the cost per vital record to $10. Instead of the increase, it was voted and passed at the annual town meeting to reduce the fee to $2 per record instead. I'm here tonight to ask the voters to increase the town clerk's vital record fees to $10 per record. I did a survey with nine other town clerks in Berkshire County to compare our vital record fees. These cities and towns included Dalton, Lennox, North Adams, Pittsfield, Richmond, Sheffield, Stockbridge, West Stockbridge, and Williamstown. Out of all the 10 communities, Great Barrington has the lowest fee of them all. Three communities charge $5 per record, five communities charge $10 per record, and one community charges $11 per record. Of all the communities, only one other has a hospital like Great Barrington, which is Pittsfield. In communities that have a hospital, the production of vital records, especially birth and death records, is much higher than those communities without a hospital. Pittsfield charges $10 per record, and I believe that Great Barrington should charge the same amount. This increase is needed because the town is currently taking a loss on any vital record that is prepared by our office. In order to provide a person with their vital record, the following resources are used: security paper that the town is required to purchase and place the vital record on, ink to print the record, the town clerk or assistant town clerk's time to process the request, and it takes even more time if it's an older record because it needs to be typed into a template instead of printed from the computer database. Postage and envelopes for records processed online and through the mail. I compiled the data for almost three full fiscal years on how much revenue was lost by reducing the fee for vital records to $2 per record instead of increasing it to 10. In Fiscal '19, there was a loss of $19,976. In Fiscal '20, there was a loss of $17,032. And in Fiscal '21, up until May 31st, there's a loss of $17,824. The total loss for almost all of those three years is $54,832.
Any questions or discussion on the proposal to change the clerk's fees? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, all those opposed? I believe the motion carries unanimously at 9:42. Article 22, the Mannville Street Right of Way.
Voted that the town accept, as a townway in Great Barrington, that portion of Mannville Street, which was discontinued by the voter, vote under Article 17 of the warrant for the annual town meeting, held on May 7, 2018. That is lots 2A, 3A, 5A, and 6A, as shown on a plan entitled Plan of Land Surveyed for 26 Mannville LLC, Great Barrington, Massachusetts, and dated March 2021, which is on file with the town clerk, and authorize the select board to acquire by gift and no consideration easements in that portion of the street for all the usual purposes of a public way in the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Explanation from the staff?
Sure, just briefly, this vote is really a legal procedural step to secure the town's ability to provide municipal services to the residences on the western end of Mannville Street. You recall, as Mr. Bannon said in the motion, that this portion was discontinued several years ago. It was discontinued in order to facilitate a private development that will not be occurring there. But that discontinuing vote by town meeting removed the town's right to pass over and use and maintain that portion of the road. So without this, the property owners there may have to get easements from each other to pass over each other's property and could force the town to get an easement in order to do what the town does on otherwise public roads.
Any questions or discussion on this item? Because of the real estate transaction nature, it requires a two-thirds vote. But if we can do that, if it's clear enough. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, all those opposed? Passes by unanimous vote, which counts as two-thirds. Article 23.
Voted that the town authorize the select board to enter into a tax increment financing, TIF, agreement, tax increment financing plan, or special tax assessment agreement and related agreements with 79 Bridge Street Realty LLC or its nominee pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 59, in connection with the redevelopment of the property at 79 Bridge Street, Great Barrington, and authorize the select board to negotiate the final terms of and execute any such agreements and plan and any documents relating thereto, and to take such other actions as are necessary or appropriate to implement the agreements and the plan pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 59, or any other enabling authority, including submission of all necessary or required applications and documents to Economic Assistance Coordinating Council of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Does the staff would like to explain this one?
Sure, just briefly, again, this is seeking the town meeting authorization for the select board to begin discussions and craft an agreement for an approval of a tax increment finance agreement. A TIF is really one of the few tools that the town has to help our businesses renovate historic buildings and to attract new businesses. It's an important assist, I'll say, for businesses that are investing substantial sums of money, taking significant financial risk in order to rehabilitate landmark buildings that are in need of significant repairs. The building in question here is the former Searls School at 79 Bridge Street in downtown. So these folks are taking pretty significant risk in, to renovate these buildings, increase the taxable value, bring jobs and revenue to the town. Some other examples of TIFs in Great Barrington that this body has authorized and the select board has executed include the old fire station on Castle Street, the former Bryant School just behind the Searls School, just to name two.
Thank you. If you have any questions or comments, please go to the microphones, which are becoming hard to see. I see no one at the microphones. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, all those opposed? I see one opposed, so it passes at 9:46. Number 24, the only zoning item left here, and I believe it's the last item on our warrant for tonight. Is there a motion?
Is this working? Yes. Voted that the town amend the zoning bylaw as set forth in Article 24 of the warrant for this town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Jonathan, wherever you are, do you want to explain it? There you are.
I'm in the dark here. If voted, this article will update the B3 Zone, which was adopted in 2007 and is now out of date. While well-intentioned and aspirational in nature, the B3 Zone has not served its primary purposes, which included stimulation of development at two large abandoned sites, the former Searls Bryant School and the Log Homes property, both on Bridge Street. The bylaw, however, is a complicated set of design controls, open space, and affordable housing provisions, bonus provisions, and onerous parking requirements, all wrapped into a complicated special permit process. The B3 Zone also included several lots on Church Street and School Street, none of which is large enough to lend itself to the sort of transformative development that the B3 was designed to encourage. The proposed update specifies the type of developments that can occur as of right, eliminates the complicated density bonuses, and affordable housing requirements which have never been used, but retains site plan review controls for new development. The planning board recommends the town meeting approve this proposal. Quickly.
No, no. Are there questions or discussion about this proposed revision of the zoning bylaw? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, raise your cards. All those opposed? Motion passes by a two-thirds majority at 9:48. There being no further business this evening. I thank you all for your attention and your patience in this marvelous setting, and I entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting.
So move.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Didn't think so? Thank you very much, everybody. See you next year. Indoors!